Hi, I'm Nadia Combs, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. I want to welcome you to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We serve more than 200,000 students. That includes children in preschool through adults in our workforce program.
I'm Henry Shay Washington, the Board Vice Chair. Our district is the seventh largest in America, and our team is made up of more than 24,000 people working at nearly 250 sites across the county.
Our district is diverse and dedicated. Our board meetings are held in our board auditorium on select Tuesdays at 4:00 PM. The best way to serve our students and our community is to involve you, the public, in what we do.
You are welcome to email or meet with any of our board members and follow our district on social media. Board meetings are covered live by Hillsborough Schools TV on Spectrum Cable Channel 635 and Frontier Cable Channel 32.
Meetings are also streamed live on our website at hillsboroughschools.org. Closed captioning is provided on all broadcasts and past meetings are available in our online archive.
We are interested in what the public has to say. We'll include time for audience comments before we address our business items. Our agenda and any supporting materials can be viewed online in advance. They're posted seven days before each meeting on our website at hillsboroughschools.org.
Our vision is preparing students for life, and that means all students every day. Todos los estudiantes todos los dias. Thank you for your interest in education. With your help, we're making decisions that shape our community's future.
The board meeting of June 21st, 2022 is called to order. Member Washington will now lead us in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. We have five withdrawn items today. AO1, Adoption Proclamation National Children's Awareness Month. AO2, Adoption Proclamation of National Internet Safety Month. 604, Purchase of Imagine Learning and Literacy from Imagine Learning Incorporated for 2022-2023 school year. 606, Purchase of Elevation Platform for Elevation Incorporated for the 2022-2023 school year. And 611, Health Insurance Renewal for 2023. I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Member... Just one moment. Okay, I'm sorry, this isn't working out here. A motion by, and a second by Member Perez. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Member Han and Member Snively, who will be joining us virtually. Board members, I'd like to go over the format of today's meeting. As a reminder, we're a nonpartisan board who believe all children can be empowered to learn, to succeed, and our decisions will be made with that understanding. To pave the way for efficient and effective agenda statements and/or questions, board members will have three minutes to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. Afterward, the superintendent can respond. If you have further questions, you're asked to get back into the queue. Member Washington will now lead us in the board guidelines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we begin this afternoon's meeting, let me quickly review the format of our school board meetings. Please silence all electronic devices. There are speakers in the room behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away from the dais. The meeting can be viewed with closed caption on the live broadcast, on cable TV, and on video monitors here in auditorium. It also can be viewed with closed caption in the online video archive.
Thank you, Member Washington. We have one item scheduled for time certain, and that's 6:00 PM, and that's employee input. We will now move to public comment. The board welcomes comments from citizens and values your input to the board. In order to provide the most comprehensive response to your comments, our staff will follow up with you and keep our board informed about the responses. Our school board respects the public's right to speak to the board, and we appreciate you taking the time to be here. However, it is requested when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a board member or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. Any behavior intended to interrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be allowed. Our civility policy is in place. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. This afternoon, each speaker will have two minutes. When there are 30 seconds left, you will see a yellow light on the lectern, a red light, and a chime to indicate when your time is up. I will now call up the first five speakers. Please, the first speaker, if they'll please come up.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Superintendent Tamara Schamberger. I'm here today to talk about mascots, and I want to be very clear that I'm not here to talk about whether mascots are controversial or whether or not they should be changed, but simply about your ability to make that decision today. Your school, your current school board policy, 2900, I believe prevents you from making that decision today. So today I want to share with you just some historical perspective and intent behind that policy because I personally brought forth school board policy, 2900, when I was the Chair of the Board in 2019. And so I gave you a handout of the policy. If you look at paragraph A, sentence one, that establishes a process for creating brand-new mascots that are created on or after 10/15/19. Sentence two establishes a process for changing those mascots pursuant to sentence one, those created after 10/15/2019. Paragraph B lays out the criteria to which mascots should be created, including "they shall respect all cultural differences." The intent behind that was to make sure we don't find ourselves in the situation you find yourselves in today. And lastly, paragraph C refers, states that "this policy shall not be retroactive," meaning that the mascot changes cannot be made for any mascot that's established on or after 10/15/19. And I'll tell you why we specifically put that in there. It was to preserve the right, the legacies of Chamberlain and East Bay, not haphazardly, but after consulting with the Title IX groups, legacy donors, alumni, schools, and staff under the leadership of former Chief of Schools Harrison Peters. And so if it's your prerogative to change the mascot, certainly you can do so, but I recommend you change this policy first. I know your school board attorney may carry a different opinion, but at very minimum, I've demonstrated that there's some ambiguity in the policy that I brought forth to this school board that still stands today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, board members. Hope all is well. My name is Susan Miguel Trina. I am an employee of Hillsborough County Public Schools. I am a community educator for the public schools, the education for the adult ed and for the technical colleges. I'm also in charge of putting events together so that our parents and our students can understand everything that Hillsborough County Public Schools has to offer. With that being said, on April 9th, we had a, we had an event for a lot of our migrants and a lot of the families that did not know what to do with their students once they got out of high school, what they needed in order to graduate from high school if they were not residents of Hillsborough County. So we brought out lawyers, and we brought out doctors, and we brought out a lot of people, partners in the community. Well, we served 275 people that day. And so with the backing of Brooks, Scott Brooks, my leader, and my board members, I wanted today give you a little bit, a token of my appreciation for helping me with this event. So this one goes to Ms. Nadia Combs. Thank you for supporting us in the West Area. And the other board member that I always work with dearly is Ms. Karen Perez. I thank both of you for tirelessly working with me and the community and the West Side area, and, well, all of Hillsborough County, because we put events all over the place, but this one was very, very successful. So thank you very much for all your efforts.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, members of the Hillsborough County School Board. I'm Cindy Huntley. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on not removing the chief from Chamberlain High School. I was a graduate from the class of 1965. I was 17 when I received my diploma and remember had no idea of what I wanted to do in my future. I remember standing in front of the chief's head on this last day of school with my classmates and singing the alma mater for the last time. I was too young to know how important the years at Chamberlain would become in my future. I was fortunate to be a member of the 120-piece band of the Fighting Chiefs under the direction of Bob Price. I was the secretary of the band my junior and senior year. Little did I know at the time that the experiences learned there would follow me in my career and my life. I learned about working as a team, striving for excellence, pride in doing a good job, and upholding traditions of the past because I was a chief, a leader. Perhaps we are not teaching the students of today how important lessons learned from the past affects their future. The chief symbol is not just a picture, it is what represents pride, excellence, leadership, and traditions. In looking at my ancestry, I found a Mohegan Indian chief was my fifth great-grandfather. I cannot imagine he would not be upset with us being reflecting his part. For all my classmates from '56 that graduated before me and those that graduated since, we all need to cherish the school that we, that was instrumental in making us who we are and to protect its future. As sung in the last line of the alma mater, "O Chamberlain, ever true to thee." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Vivian Harnett Langston, and I was born and raised in Tampa, Florida. I attended the Hillsborough County Public Schools from first grade all the way through high school, Lake Magdalen, Forest Hills, Adams Junior High, and I graduated in 1969 from Chamberlain. I was in the anchor club, the course under Jim Copeland, and I also was the head chief at that year. I have taught in the school district of Hillsborough County for 40 years. I am giving you this information so that you will know I've been in the school system and I've been in it for many years, so I can see at different sites. I have never heard or seen any disrespect of the Chamberlain mascot, only a true reverence for what he represents. Leadership, honor, perseverance, and also a great model and teacher for his people. On behalf of many of the alumni, I'm asking that the school board not vote today on removing this mascot from Chamberlain High School. Even though we are no longer students of Chamberlain, the alumni support the school and the students with funds that are needed for special activities and supplies for various functions. They have also volunteered their time to help with student and staff events, all because we love our high school and want to help the students and teachers in any way that we can do during the school year. The alumni were never contacted for any input into this decision and did not know about the vote until the vote changed into last week. This has created a lot of disappointment. We would like to form a committee consisting of students, faculty, the Indigenous Alliance Group, and alumni to discuss the mascot change and see if there's any way that we can come up with a plan that would satisfy all groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kyle Milwee. I am a proud member of the Laborers International Union of North America, and I am also the president of the West Central Florida Future Labor Leaders. I'm here today to thank you for your policy change requiring the use of state-registered apprentices on county public school building projects. These registered apprenticeship programs are the premier way to continue someone's education after graduating high school, teaching them a skilled trade and allowing them to earn equitable wages and family-supporting benefits, all while, you know, supporting their community through construction. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Bures from the Chamberlain class of 1965. My family has been active in the community since 1894, when they settled the Lake Magdalen area. Three generations of my family have graduated from Chamberlain, starting with my sister in the class of 1962. The fourth generation will start there in another four to five years. I find it difficult to accept that a small percent of the current students can make the decision to change from Chamberlain chiefs. It is my understanding that only one-third of the current students were polled, with 64% wanting to change, that such a small percent of those have an interest in retaining our honored chief. The early classes of Chamberlain chose a chief, and the students have worked with Native Americans to honor the heritage throughout the years. The town hall meeting that was scheduled and postponed was never held. That would have been an opportunity for all alumni to state their preference, but that has not happened. Supposedly, there was a survey, but I've not seen any results of that or an indication of who was surveyed. No one I know of was surveyed, and I'm routinely in contact with other classmates. I have seen a petition to keep the chief mascot at Chamberlain High School that, as of June 19th, had been signed by close to 6,500 people. There are many alumni who also have more than one generation of Chamberlain chiefs. They should be included in any decision. Rather than spend untold funds changing from the Chamberlain chiefs, I feel those funds should be directed at education and safety of students. I'd like to thank the Chamberlain Legacy Alliance for their work with the feeder schools for Chamberlain and the students and staff of Chamberlain. We ask that this item be tabled until the alumni and community can be included in these surveys or polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Mark Vigiano. I'm a journeyman pipe fitter out of Local 123, Tampa, Florida. I would also like to express my thanks towards the policy change that was put forth recently. Apprenticeship changed my life about seven, eight years ago. I went through the apprenticeship program out of 123, gave me a skill set, allowed me to buy a house, have healthcare, retirement, you know, I have a career. And that policy change that you guys put forth will allow that to happen to many other people and make a story like mine, not the exception, but a more common occurrence. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Pamela Gall, Chamberlain graduate, class of 65. My family has had three generations grace the halls of Chamberlain, all proudly as chiefs. Supposedly, the alumni and the community were a part of this decision. We were not. We were canceled and buried. The district had set up two town hall meetings in the auditorium and suddenly got canceled due to COVID. There was also an online survey that put out suddenly, that put out suddenly, got shut down, and the results never saw the light of the day. This is not a conspiracy. These are facts. Instead, the school board has permitted a group of current students and faculty to advisors who's fresh out of college, who is leading this charge, have decided that our mascot, the chief, is offensive. No consideration has been given to the impact of the community and alumni. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary John Schaefer, and I'm a 1967 graduate of Chamberlain High School. Chamberlain was opened in 1956, and they chose chief as their mascot. That was 65 years ago. Now, the symbol chief has always been a great respect. It's a symbol of respect for anyone who has a Native American heritage. Chamberlain High School has always held a proud tradition of being a chief. Now, the term chief is used to describe the leaders of the indigenous nations that settlers of North America use as a term of respect. The word chief is a noun, meaning the head or leader of an organized body of people, the person highest in authority, like the chief of police, the head or ruler of a tribe or clan, an Indian chief. Very few people in our country, a few people in our country over the past years seem to have decided they want to destroy our history, and I think this needs to stop now. It's an insult to say that being a chief is derogatory to our indigenous people. Having grown up in Hillsborough County, it was always an honor to be a Chamberlain graduate. The Chamberlain High School is famous for their notable alumni. I'm sure most everyone's heard of Steve Garvey, who graduated from Chamberlain, Forrest Blue, our mayor, Ms. Castor is also a graduate of Chamberlain High School, Shannon Daughery, an actress. We have Chip Glass. We have Lauren Hutton. These are all graduates of Chamberlain High School. There are many more. We have famous authors, actresses, professional athletes, politicians. The Icoch Brothers, who are very, very well-known in Hillsborough County, are also graduates and famous for Chamberlain High School. To be a chief is not an insult to anybody, and I think that children today should understand they have a heritage to live up to from the former Chamberlain chiefs who have come in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jen Hart. I am a public school teacher and a parent in Hillsborough County. I'm here today to encourage the board members to vote with the students of Chamberlain High School to change their mascot. To quote an article from the APA, "The use of Native American Indian mascots as symbols in schools and athletic programs is troubling because schools are places of learning. These mascots are teaching stereotypical, misleading, and often insulting images of indigenous peoples." It has also been proven that sports mascots such as this and other stereotyping directly affects academic performance and self-esteem of Native American students, contributing to disproportionate levels and socioeconomic status. We constantly say as educators that we need to create inclusive and safe places of learning so all students can feel respected and represented, and that that is what's necessary for them to meet their full potential. The students of Chamberlain themselves know this to be true, so when they were presented with a survey asking if they thought their mascot should be changed, they said yes. It is a shame that people want to silence the voices of our future. It's an even greater shame that people want to uphold these mascots, which are a direct reflection of institutional racism, and that's obviously hurting many people. I don't know of any indigenous peoples groups who don't say that this is directly institutional racism to them. So when people are saying to you that this is hurting us, I feel like we should listen. And when students are saying it's time for a change, I also feel like we should listen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Terry Sisko, and I'm president of the Chamberlain High School Legacy Alliance. Here are my two recommendations to move the issue toward resolution. First, keep the name chief intact. It is a French etymology. Without the context of the Native American in a headdress, the title chief is not inherently Native American. The district has a fabulous chief of schools, chief of innovation, et cetera. None of those positions conjures images of Native Americans. Unlike panther, eagle, falcon, or bull, a chief is one of the very few symbols in the district that present an aspirational position of attainment. It creates an expectation for our students and demands a high set of ideals. There's a reason that so many Chamberlain alumni have become leaders throughout Tampa Bay and beyond. Secondly, remove Native American cultural appropriations. Then, let the students appropriate a dead culture or mythological chief moving forward. Today's students feel cheated because they hear about the fun traditions, pageantry, and memories so cherished by our alumni, and they have nothing. Starting in 2017, the school has been cleansed and sanitized of everything Native American. Unfortunately- Unfortunately, the high ransom that must be paid to free our current and future students to enjoy their high school experience is the chief head on the front of the school that has been a North Tampa landmark for generations. This will hurt, but alumni will always be chiefs with their memories intact. Finally, for years, Adams Middle School were called Warriors. They were required to eliminate the name because of the Native American imagery associated with it. They became Golden Eagles. Yet, it remains permissible for Steinbrenner High School to be called Warriors. Why? Because Steinbrenner associated a dead culture with the name, specifically a Spartan. Give the Chamberlain students and community the same opportunity. School board, vote to keep the name chief intact to link our past with our present. Alumni, let's support current and future students as they create a new iconic image to rally around. Right now, they have few memories to share.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Betty Sue White Brown. I'm a charter class member of Chamberlain High School, graduating 1958. We started Chamberlain in '56, and we chose the chief to instill courage, inspiration, and leadership. And we've done that. Look who is the president of USF now, Rhea Law, Chamberlain graduate. And it's already been said that Jane Castor was a Chamberlain graduate. So is Kathy Castor, a U.S. representative, and Ken Hagan, who's a county commissioner. Well, the reason chief has meant so much to us is because it is dear. Now, I'm not real happy with the way that this, all of this was chosen. East Bay got to let all of their students vote. They had two days to go in and vote. No one really guiding them. They did hear from Indian representatives, but they got to choose who they wanted and when without anybody selecting a certain number. Now, they voted unanimously to keep their mascot as Indian. Chamberlain, on the other hand, had to, was given 418, or maybe 81, I'm sorry, I may have mixed my papers up here, but of 1,100 students. Board member Washington, you were principal at Chamberlain. You were a high chief at one time. Thank you. But the amount of people that they selected chose out of the 418, the less, the number was 22% agreed to change it. That's a minority, not a majority, as it's all been published on the news programs that at Chamberlain was, sorry, I'm almost 82 years old, so forgive me. Charter class graduate and glad of it. In fact, I was the first chiefette that they chose, and I made the first chiefette costumes. We've had a beautiful band with great costumes, which we've had to give up.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I appreciate you listening to an 82-year-old.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, school board members, my name is Dan Dill. And I'm a 1971 graduate. Very proud. After graduation, I went on to the University of South Florida where I graduated. After that, I went to Marshall University, Huntington, West Virginia, where I graduated with master's degree in biology and medical science. During my master's program, I did a, my thesis on medicinal plants of North America and Indian generation. I myself am an American Indian. It may be watered down, but my family hails from Ohio. I am Iroquois and from the Shawnee-Japp Valley, many generations behind, but it still is very near and dear to my heart. I'm extremely upset that Chamberlain High School is about to lose their chief. It meant a lot to me. To go to school, I was in the band, I was in the chorus, and the preparation of being a proud chief, learning to fight for everything that I had, learning to fight through the adversity of trying to get into school. I appreciate your attention to this matter. It's extremely emotional to a lot of people, but I'd like to appeal to the indigenous, excuse me, indigenous people who oppose this. Work with us. Work with Chamberlain. Work with the Alliance. Tell us what we're doing wrong. Tell us, please, and we'll make those corrections. I can see, and I can promise that I think every alumni here will do the same. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Oscar Gonzalez. I'm retired from the school district, 39 years, 31 years assistant principal for administration, eight years as a coach and teacher. I know firsthand the tradition at Chamberlain. I coached there. I had my children go through that. I had three of them, and all three of them graduated from Chamberlain. The tradition at Chamberlain was unbelievable. The spirit they had was unbelievable for the chief. I also had the opportunity to work for James Gatlin, who was a tremendous individual, tremendous motivator, and tremendous proponent for the students. We worked together at Buchanan Junior High while I was assistant principal with him there. He got promoted to Chamberlain High School, and he became the big chief. He played the part, the chief. He was the chief. He ran around wearing very respectfully the headdress and the ceremonial dress of the chief. He had a school spirit. He took the students to an upper level, which has never been unbelievable. That was Mr. Gatlin. I know that for a fact because my oldest daughter was a student there. After Mr. Gatlin retired, moved on to the district office, became area director, there was another young man who came in and took his steps, big shoes to follow. He was also the, then made the big chief, and that was Mr. Washington. And he did a tremendous job, Mr. Washington did, and he's a personal friend of mine. I love him to death, but he took it that way, and he dressed the part, played the part, and the students loved him. I'm going to finish up. Give me a few minutes, a seconds, please. He took it to a level that was unreal. He showed the respect, and everybody showed the respect for the sacred wear of what the chiefs stood for. I'm going to carry on finishing now. I went to University of Miami, and I was very grateful to be able to play football there. I had three Native American young men on our team together. That was Andy Sixkiller, Jim Wani, and Jim Washington. Jim Washington was my roommate, one of my roommates. Jim Washington and I have spoken to each other for 56 years. Give me a second. I'm going to hang up. And I am, ma'am, but he's a Native American. He told me, I asked him, is it okay I speak today? He said, I want you to know something, I'm proud to, because without this, you'll never know about the Native American. If they take the chief away, the warrior way, the brave way, and the Indian way, the Native American will not be, because there's a history there which is unbelievable.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Paul Sisko. I've been a lawyer in this town for 30 years, and I'm a graduate of Chamberlain High School in 1985. I speak for myself today, not for any entity, but I will tell the board that we have a group of Chamberlain lawyers that meets each year at Chamberlain High School, and the culinary department there puts on a lunch for us. It's very impressive. And we get together, and we do talk about the school. We talk about the fact the condition of the school has deteriorated quite a bit over the decades, but we talk about, and we range in age from graduates of the 1950s, as you see, to the present, and we talk about how we can make life better for these students and get the pride back in that school. We are all Chamberlain chiefs at that lunch. The term chief is not a pejorative term in any manner. I would ask, and counsel will tell you, can one of these folks that wants to support this tell us in any way how the term chief is pejorative in a single manner? It is nothing but a symbol of pride. It's a symbol of integrity of character. It's used for the chief of police, the chief executive. It's also an adjective signifying the most important, our chief concerns, our chief issues, our chief agenda item. I saw at least five references to chief on the board's own agenda today. We have a chief of schools, chief of operations, chief financial officer, chief of strategic planning, chief of diversity, akin to the banking corporations that have 90 vice presidents. The term chief was chosen in the 1950s not as a slight, no insult, no disparagement, not as a dig at anyone or any group of people, but as a strong symbol of the principle that students, teachers, and parents of high schools should aspire to. It is also a symbol which, for several decades, has united members of the Tampa community, a symbol of dignity, integrity of character, the chief. George Orwell, which I read in 1984, interestingly enough, 1984 book, talked about the reduction of language. I know my time's up.
Thank you. I know. I just want to make sure we're fair and everyone has the exact time. So, thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'll claim the 20 seconds Mr. Gonzalez did also. I will tell you-
Well, that's the, that's, please, thank you. Next speaker, please.
We are well-funded.
Next speaker. And we will stick to the two minutes. Next speaker, please.
Hey there. My name is Joey Larson, class 87. I'm the founder of a 501(c)(3) called Chamberlain High School Drives, 100% volunteer. We raise, so far to date, about a half a million dollars for St. Joseph's Children's Hospital. One of my good friends who can't be here today did a write-up that I think will touch everybody on all sides, and then including all of you guys. Maybe everybody can get together and work on something. His name is Blake Hawthorne. I'm a graduate from the class of 1986. I have read the background, the alliance that is the crux and the center point of the move to remove chiefs from existing at Chamberlain, as well as the vote by one single student body. And I can empathize and understand much of the motivation involved. I also see that their motivation is possibly blinding them from seeing these steps doing more long-term damage than good. The name chiefs has never been just some mascot. It's always been something more. The word chiefs imparts honor, reverence, pride, confidence, and leadership just in the name alone. For myself and so many classmates I knew representing the chiefs, be it athletically or academically, there was and still is a sense of connection between us and to the Native American people of which I have chalked off from my mother's lineage. Being a chief meant understanding the heritage and made me more aware and interested in knowing the real history of Native Americans, not just in that region, but the country, as I'm sure it has done with countless others over the years. Removing that would be losing that. I know that there are some cultural appropriations that took place when I was a student that, yeah, they were offensive and which we needed to stop, which I hope that they have, but I know removing such an important and powerful name won't just wipe out appropriations of the past, it will also wipe away the chance at making that name and the symbol of Native American greatness in history further away from the hearts and minds of so many yet to come, so many that will never feel that connection.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I am Mary Beth Palmer, a Chamberlain High School graduate of the class of 1965. My first comments are in regard to the process our Board of Education followed to get to this moment. Our board is about to vote on a contentious and divisive action without allowing all of the stakeholders to follow the process. In other words, there has been a dire lack of transparency and as the decision-making process unfolded. One example is the survey that was issued to the alums. I filled one out. Where's the data and the analysis of that data to be found? Now, here are my thoughts regarding the proposed elimination of the Chamberlain chief. It has long been tradition in the schools of America to adopt school colors and particular school mascot. The primary purpose for any school group using a particular mascot and color should be to unify, create a community with like goals, and to use colors and mascots to exemplify particular values and standards that students can aspire to. As our society has evolved to a point where many people have more understanding and a greater sensitivity to the ways in which language, mascots, and symbols can harm and demean members of ethnic and racial groups, we have seen a needed change in what is susceptible. The cartoon mascots and cartoonish symbols must go, and for the most part, have gone. I suggest that the chief, as presented at Chamberlain High School, be viewed as in a different framework. I am suggesting that the chief be kept as a symbol for all that it represents in terms of value, leadership, perseverance, knowledge, respect, commitment, dedication, and loyalty. We can keep the chief and we use it as a symbol rather than a mascot. It is entirely doable to have both a symbol and a mascot. The Chamberlain community could continue to use the chief as a symbol while developing a different mascot that is aligned with the school athletic events. This is precedent for this. FSU claims the Seminole as a symbol, not as a mascot. Let us not throw the values that the chief has stood for since 1956. We can move forward and be more accepting and sensitive to those Americans with the indigenous heritage by making sure that the chief continues to symbolize all that is positive while creating a different mascot for activities and athletic events at Chamberlain. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, and thank you for giving the opportunity to speak here today. I'm Debbie Kerr Taglerini, a Chamberlain chief, class of 1969 alumni. To many of us that are CHS alumni, the name chief hasn't been about a mascot. It's been so much more. The word chief meant leadership, pride, confidence. It provided skills for fellowship, community, learning, tradition, perseverance, and loyalty to one another. These are just some of the qualities that we had the opportunity to acquire and share. The chief was not just for sports, although sports were and is a great builder of character. We had many varieties of learning, including music programs, art, theater programs, educational and leadership programs, the clubs that did many projects through the year to support local needs, all in the name of the Chamberlain chiefs. I personally had the opportunity to be a member of the award-winning concert chorus and the senior trio, a junior varsity and varsity cheerleader. I was also a member of the Future Teachers of America and Anchor Club and the National Honor Society, all of those brought on by what I was able to learn and acquire at Chamberlain. At the CHS class of 1969 50th reunion, we raised over $3,000 through raffles and direct donations and presented the funds to the Chamberlain High School Legacy Alliance at a town hall meeting in June 2019 for the project to construct a safety and beautification fence around the school grounds that would be proud for people to drive by and see every day with our Chamberlain chief hanging above the building. Many other fundraisers requested from the Legacy Alliance have received many individual donations to benefit today and tomorrow's future student needs. As we, the alumni, left the hollowed halls of Chamberlain, we went through to walk our vigil, our paths of life, yet when we meet in the passing or at reunions, the one tie that binds us are being proud and loyal chiefs.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman, board members, superintendent. The members of the board have a simple but daunting task: to believe that inclusion can be accomplished by scrubbing society of words and images or allowing the next generation to learn and emulate the best parts of our shared heritage. The term chief was an English word that was bestowed upon the leaders of Native American tribes. It is also a word that is used to describe the most prestigious occupations in our society: chief executive officer, chief of medicine, chief strategist, commander in chief, and for me personally, my rank in the United States Army, a chief warrant officer, to which I am almost exclusively referred to as chief. Does holding any of these positions make any of them intolerant to Native Americans in their society? I do not believe so. If there is any critique that has validity to this argument is that, as it stands, the chief at Chamberlain is essentially a nameless and faceless figure and is just an overall representative of Native Americans. So, change what's actually at issue. Vote to assign the school a patron. Require that assemblies and pep rallies reflect their contribution to the society and give credence as to why the individual was chosen to be the school's patron. As of the 2020 U.S. Census, Native Americans compromise less than 3% of the total population. The answer cannot be just to wash away the past. Let's make a real effort to include history and culture to our schools. Just voting to remove the chief name from the school will only do what many society has done, which is wiping out the culture that existed before it. Let's do better. Let's keep the Native American culture in our society and not let it disappear. I'm an alumni of class of 2002. God bless you. God bless America.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Shannon Durant. I am the Title VI Chair for Hillsborough County Native American and Alaskan Native students. I was asked tonight to speak something positive about what's happening at Chamberlain, but I feel the need to take a few seconds to address the alumni that are standing here and saying that we didn't include them in this decision. We've been working on this for eight years, eight years. And for eight years, I have met with Terry Sisko, I have met with Mr. Russell at Chamberlain. So, when they say we didn't include- So when they say we didn't include them, they didn't include themselves. And if they're back there saying, "We didn't call anybody," I didn't have a number to call. You talked to Mr. Cisco because he knew what was going on. But I would like to plead to the Board, this was led by students. We were asked to let it be led by students. You were all elected by parents of students, but saying that students come first. If we can't honor what the students want, what are we doing? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jamie Perez. I am a member of Title VI Parent Advisory Committee. I also am a parent in Hillsborough County that have put 13 children through this school district and am currently putting five still in there. I wish to speak to you all about the Native American mascots. If you travel across the United States, I had the opportunity to take my children to 33 indigenous nations. I have lived on four. It is a common consensus among most indigenous people that the mascots are derogatory. They are harmful. The alumni have spoken in droves about how they were respectful to us and that they never did anything to show disrespect. I beg to pardon them with Chief Umpapa and your homecoming event that was a green corn dance, an appropriation of another nation marriage ceremony in which they married the chief princess or the head princess off to whomever was enacting as Chief Umpapa. Read your poem yourself. Secondarily, putting, asking a Native American person to put a sticker on that has a chief's head on it when our chiefs and our head leaders have been beheaded and put in jars on display at the Mayo Clinic and other places and other institutions. Running around with garb that has been stolen from our people is not how you show honor to our people. Whom are you trying to honor? You're not honoring me. You're not honoring my children. You're not honoring my grandmother who has scars on her tongue from not being allowed to speak her language when she was stolen from her reservation and put into boarding schools. You're not honoring the 3,300 dead at the boarding schools now. You're not honoring me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Superintendent, Madam Chair, Board Members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Ruth Nowland, and I grew up in a village in Alaska. I'm Inupiat, and I have spent many years helping educate students in Hillsborough County as well as parents and other teachers on Native American culture and what is considered inappropriate, what is considered appropriate. And we have had many wonderful discussions and the time that was taken by students, teachers, and parents to listen. I ask that you listen to the students now. They know what is appropriate, what is inappropriate, and they have taken the time to listen and to learn. There are many different nations in the United States that are Native American, and their culture, their history is an amazing attribute. We're not asking that anything be erased. We're not asking that Chamberlain no longer be able to have a history, but to put that history where it belongs and to move forward, because once you know better, then you do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tagway, Titiuno, Tateau, Niteuno, Ma'boias. I speak to you in my language to honor my ancestors. There's no way that chief is a title. The man is correct, but when you label it to an Indian head, that's disrespect. If you look at the back of that shirt, it says "Native Rituals." What do all think when they hear ritual? Sacrifices, so forth? Is that honoring us? This goes on. Chief Papa or whatever the heck he was called. Now, I could also tell you, 1956, this was a victory. The victory document, though bus driver is in charge of the bus and has been instructed to obey the law, assume that he will operate in helping you. This is in regards to taking the bus. Will we use this right here? And we got to assume that you are going to help us. Number two, do not deliberately sit next to a white person unless there is no other seat. We should be able to sit wherever we want. Native history belongs to us. I was going to go on, because there's two other ones that are more important, but I want you to respect the kids' vote. Kids matter. They shouldn't have to worry about alumni's money. They shouldn't have to worry about alumni's anger. Respect the children. What are we teaching them if we don't? That money could buy them out? I-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Nina Tatlock. I want to thank you for listening to me tonight, and I would like to ask that you please support releasing Chamberlain High from their chief's mascot. I also am going to say that I'm a white baby boomer, and I am going to, just like many who have spoken ahead of me, and I'm going to stand here and tell you that I know that I was taught a whitewashed history, and I'm not a better person for that. But as the man ahead of me said, when we, or someone ahead said, "When we know better, we should do better." Our indigenous people have had so much taken away from them throughout history. It is time to end the use of derogatory names for mascots. Love of high school and students should not be because of a mascot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Dave Coleman, and a few miles north of here, as we speak, World Peace and Prayer Day is occurring, as it has since 1996, two years after the first white buffalo was born in the recent, in our recent history. The world, the world event called by Chief Averill Looking Horse is being held at the invitation of Professor Colhane at the Rosebud Continuum, which is a site used as an outdoor classroom by the USF Patel Institute of Sustainability. The four-day ceremony has brought spiritual leaders and chiefs from Quebec, Alaska, across North America, all the way down to South America. The presenters are talking on their laws, their culture, their language, their environment, and their children. They are willing to share their answers about environmental collapse. It is only with respect and cooperation that there will be a sustainable future for any of us. I'm going to skip a part because I'll probably run out of time. In the 1490s, the Pope decreed that the doctrine of discovery, which became ingrained in our legal system as the doctrine of dominance. First Nations people had the absolute right to free and independent existence, which they practiced despite our assumption of dominance that colonializers have practiced for 400 years. Chief Averill Looking Horse said this morning that he cannot carry a gun or use foul language. He carries a message of peace and prayer. I passed the Chamberlain High the other day with the marquees and the entrance, and I look at the Big Bend Indian page with their chief. I immediately call on the Board to immediately remove all such symbols. It makes us, us, the supposed dominant people here, look sick, spiritually sick, and condescending in every way. We need to heal, not continue to insult and demonize. There was a lot more I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Bissett, 2625 Clark Road, third-generation Tampa, and a first-year graduate at Chamberlain, 1958. I got to tell you, I read the article in the Internet on the process after this, if in fact it's decided to remove Chamberlain Chiefs. The process will be to go back to the students, have an election, and get a new mascot. Guess what? We did that 65 years ago. The same school board, not the same people, but the same school board approved that process. So why are we doing it again? The chief's head that's on the front of that building was put together with a group of kids who were 15, 16, 17-years-old by raising nickel times and quarters in the lunchroom until we had enough money to put the chief's head up. It was erected that year, in 1957, '58, and remained there for 50 years, and then became deteriorated from other schools throwing paint on it, et cetera. And we collected the same amount of effort to raise enough money to refurbish it, and we did, and put it back up with the help of the school, or with the school system. So I understand that part of the issue is that some people are offended by us or by Chamberlain using the chief's head as a symbol. Well, let me tell you, I'm the first one to agree you shouldn't offend people. How many thousands of people are going to be offended if they're required to take that off? A lot. And if we're going to talk about offending, maybe the Humane Society ought to come up here and ask for the terrors to be taken down.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Lee Carden. I'm here to speak regarding the Discussion Agenda Item Number 4.02 regarding Superintendent Davis's proposed contract. Let me begin by saying that 55% of the students in Hillsborough County schools are deemed proficient in math. 54% of them are deemed proficient in reading. If those scores were earned on a test by those same students, by almost every standard, they would be deemed failing grades. Almost half the children in our public schools are not proficient in math and reading, the very basic reason they go to school. We have approximately 223,000 pre-K through 12th grade students in our county schools with a $2.3 trillion budget. That's roughly $10 million per student, and they should all be able to at least read and do basic math. Most families today with children in the public school system are tightening their belts. They're finding ways to make do with much less because we're seeing skyrocketing gas prices, skyrocketing food prices, and inflation that hasn't been seen since 1980. Yet this body is seeking to raise their millage rate and increase the salary of the superintendent, all of which adds significant financial burdens to these same families. Instead of spending tax dollars to promote raising the millage rate and instead of increasing Superintendent Davis's salary in a new contract, it seems far more prudent in this predictable economy to do what most families are doing, and that is to work within your budget and make it work. I would liken that to, I'm old enough to remember the Apollo 13 flight. If you're not, you may remember the 1995 movie about the heroic ways in which the crew survived after a malfunction in their module. They had to make the most of what they had. They had to use their intellect, intellect and ingenuity-
Thank you.
-to make it work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm asking you all to do the same thing.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, Board, thank you for allowing me to come forward this afternoon. My name is Debbie Hunt. I am here to talk about Agenda Item 6.17 on the Discussion Agenda, the Mental Health Plan for the Use of Mental Health Assistance Allocation. I attended the workshop remotely last week and listened to all of the discussion and have some concerns. There appeared to be a distinct downplay on the parental involvement in, with the kids. But one example was when they were talking about taking the kids who were going to be Baker-acted. Their focus was their services were reducing law enforcement in interaction when, in fact, they were also reducing the parent interaction, if you look at the results that they showed. One of the things that was concerning is that, is that because parents aren't being notified? Are they not showing up in time? Or are they not showing up at all? Another comment that was made by one of the presenters had to do with, "They are our kids. We have to take care of them." In multiple rulings, both the Supreme Court, as well as, the federal Supreme Court, as well as Florida Supreme Court, have determined that kids are the parents' kids and the parents' responsibility. A third note would be Dr. Han, who is a board member, she's not here today, but she noted that social workers and guidance counselors had been terminated or let go. I don't believe that that would be of, of, an appropriate decision to make when you're bringing in outside people to do the same type of work, and you have to acknowledge that you did not supplant funds to take the grant, the mental health assistance funds. I'm also very concerned about the video that was played with the young man in it who spoke with the counselor and spoke with a teacher about what was going on in his family and his home life and concerns he had, and I just think that it was not appropriate.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board Members. My name is Larry Jenkins, a lifelong resident of Tampa and a graduate of Hillsborough County Schools and a military veteran. I'd like to say that when I was making my transition from the military to civilian world, I just so happened to luck upon the Joint Apprenticeship Training Center on Harley Road, and I got accepted as an apprentice. And being an apprentice and earning, the trade has made a lifelong difference in my life. And I'd like to thank the Board for acknowledging the fact that being a skilled tradesman is a good alternative to going to college. And I also would like to say that giving incentives, incentives to contractors to start state or state-approved program is a good thing, and I would like to thank you for your support for the apprenticeship program ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And that, that concludes our public comment for today, and thank you to all the speakers. I'd like to now introduce a special guest to the podium at this time. I'd like to call up Carol Cook with the Florida School Board Association.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Davis, and staff. Thank you for allowing me to be here today, and I'm here for something that's very exciting for me to be, am I done? You don't think it's as exciting as I do. I'm here to present you with something that you earned, and as you know, Florida School Boards Association provides a lot of services for its members. One of them is professional development, and I am here today to thank you for choosing to participate in professional development. By doing that, you're sending a message, actually two messages. One, you're sending the message that your students are important, and working with the community, working with parents, and working with all of our staff, teachers, and everyone else, to make sure that the children are getting the best education possible is important to you. We talked about the research that shows there is a direct correlation between the work of a school board and, and student achievement. The second message that you're sending is that professional development is important. It's important enough for the Board and the Superintendent to go through it. It's also important for our teachers to continue to grow in their profession and learn more about it. Some of the things that we discussed were respect and trust and a governance core, and what's the difference between governance and management and what your roles are- what's the difference between governance and management and what your roles are. I am pleased to be here today to present to you a plaque from Florida School Boards Association that recognizes Hillsborough County as a master board. You've gone through 22 hours of training in order to be able to work together better and to be able to learn how to make decisions. You've got a tough one ahead of you tonight, and I hope you remember some of the things that we talked about as far as respect and the, the need sometimes to disagree in order to be able to look at all perspectives and to come up with the best decision. So I, I wish you great success tonight, but mostly congratulations on the job well done, and I'd like to present that to you. And if you would come down and have a picture taken, we'll make sure that you get the proper, proper credit with FSBA. They'll send it out and let people know that Hillsborough County is one of them that did it. Okay. Okay. Let me get this for you. There it is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
She settled back in. Thank you again, Carol Crook and to the FSBA Association. We really appreciate it. And you know, this is a very challenging job for each and one of us, and we just want you to know, we work very hard to make sure, to be a very cohesive and strong board, and we appreciate everybody coming in today. So we will now move on. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Member Gray, and I have a second by Member Perez. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. I will now move on to Superintendent Davis to highlight our administrative appointments.
Yes, ma'am. I think I have the, somebody has a clicker. We had a presentation for students. Tonight, we want to be able to take the opportunity to acknowledge some of our new leaders in our school district. This should be some of the, a final phase of our transitions to be able to identify leaders that are moving from one location to the next, or the same token, being able to come and lead for the first time within an organization. As I call your name, if you'll please do me a favor and walk down this aisle and be recognized for your hard work and be able to be waived, and we appreciate your, your efforts and, and for being here this evening. Sorry, someone's already been clicking the buttons. The first one we have is our new Regional Superintendent for Transformation is Mr. Matthew Hayes. He is not here this evening, but let's give him a round of applause. Been in education for 15 years, has been in high need school, all Title I, has been in transformation as a teacher, an AP, a principal, and also he has done a lot of this work in Pennsylvania, and he's been a principal in Pennsylvania since 2016 at Roosevelt K-8, tremendous transformation. His superintendent was sad for him to transition down, but we look forward to having him and leading this work in transformation under Shay McCray. So congratulations, Matthew. Look forward to connecting with you soon. Also, we, we have another leader of transformation to fill the executive director position. This is Dr. Christine Harris. She's been in education for 20 years in, in Orange County, also worked for the Bureau of Improvement in Department of Education, worked for Just Reads Florida, and also with Florida Virtual, and is currently the principal at Bridge Prep Academy and moved that school from an F to a B, and has significant knowledge of how to transform the work and being able to lead the work within our organization. And congratulations, look forward to connecting with you soon. Dr. Harris, welcome to Hillsborough County. Not here as well. Also, we have a, a new leader going to Jefferson High School. Started in Hillsborough County in 2006, started at a second, as a Secretary for Student Services, worked her way up to get a bachelor's degree from University of South Florida, also had a master's degree from St. Leo, and truly a success story. This is our new leader, Brittany Willem. Congratulations. Welcome. Also taught at Shields, at Pierce, does some really cool work, was an assistant, was administrator at Leonard, also now at Middleton High School. Congratulations, look forward to supporting you in this effort. Congratulations, Jefferson Senior High School. Thank you. We also have a leader next that had an opportunity to open up a number of our schools in Hillsborough County, one being Strawberry Crest. I believe that was in 2010. Also opened up our new little city in Sumner High School with over 3,400 students. He has been a principal at Lato. He's done so much great work, transitioned to the district, went to be the interim principal at Robinson. He's done a lot. This is our principal now moving from interim to consistent, everyday principal at Robinson High School, David Brown. Thank you so very much. He wears many hats. He did both jobs while he was at Robinson High School, and we appreciate his efforts and look forward to him becoming, I think actually he went to high school at Robinson High School. Is that right, sir? 95, right? All right.
95, yeah.
Yeah. I was trying to help you, and you want to debate it. That's fine. Yes, right. Congratulations, sir. Also, always looking for, you know, leaders to go to our high schools, find one that graduated from Central Michigan University, had an opportunity to start her career and teach it in Hillsborough County as an ELA teacher, transitioned to an, to an avid teacher at Sickles, also was a district peer evaluator, and then also returned to Sickles, the APC. And this is our new principal of Sickles High School, Mrs. Krista Luloff. Congratulations. Also, our next leader going to Burnett Middle School, born in Crystal River, began his, you know, career in Hillsborough County as a VE teacher, was an ESE specialist, has led in elementary, middle school, high school, alternative settings, and he is currently the AP at Burnett, and he gets to transition in the school he's currently leading. Congratulations, Mr. Brooks. You are the new principal of that middle school. Also, our next leader looking to go into a really unique situation with Farrell Middle School. Karen French has done an absolutely awesome job, and we're really trying to find a leader that truly understands the dynamics of this school district. She is the current president of HASSA, has done a magnificent job. She's been an assistant principal at so, you know, from Jefferson to La Boy to King, all over a number of experiences, but taught teaching, began teaching in Hillsborough County in 2012, I believe it was, was it Bloomingdale, Beavis? Burns, okay, somewhere around there. And congratulations, look forward to our partnership. Ms. Cara Dill, you are the new principal of Farrell Middle School. Congratulations. Also, next leader is 24 years in Hillsborough County, began at Rogers in 1998, transitioned to be able to open up Randall in 1999, was an assistant principal at, at Newsom, and then transitioned since 2012 as the assistant principal at Blake High School, and now will transition to McLean Middle School. Mrs. Keisha Thompson, congratulations. Strong instructional leader. Look forward to supporting your efforts. Next leader, you know, looking for a leader to transition to PISO K-8. Amber wanted to go back to an elementary side of it, so we have an individual that's been in Hillsborough County for more than 19 years, started as an English teacher, I believe, around 93, 94, somewhere around there. 2007 was an assistant principal at Chamberlain, at Farrell, at Woodson, and then became the principal at Woodson, I believe, in 2015 at K-8, and now will take on PISO K-8. Great leader, bright future, Mr. Ovet Wilson. Congratulations. Next leader's been in education in Hillsborough County for 23 years and truly a magnificent leader in this organization. Started at Mort as a teacher, transitioned as a teacher as, at Mort, as an AP at Mort, Tampa Boulevard AP, Shaw's AP, 13 years as a current principal at Tampa Boulevard Elementary School, gets a chance to move to Webb Middle School to do some really cool things, and that's Mrs. Glenda Vinuiza. Vinuiza. Congratulations. I practiced that name all day. I'm just kidding, Glenda. Next leader began in Hillsborough County, 2008, spent two years at Bellamy, also had, you know, an AP at Bellamy as well, transitioned to the district to do some assessment and accountability, and then said, "You know what? I want to go back and do some more work at the school, at schools," was an AP at Woodbridge. And welcome back to the Bobcat family. And now will be the new principal at Bellamy is Mrs. Michelle Costani. Congratulations. All right. Next individual was a teacher, you know, for many years in, in Hillsborough County, was an ESE support specialist, ESE lead, was a, an AP at Schramonte for the last three years, and a strong presence, strong instructional leader. Congratulations, Mrs. Smullen, you are now the new principal of Schramonte Elementary School. Almost there. Also, 15 years in education in Hillsborough County, was a second grade, third grade, fourth grade teacher, I think I should have said all elementary school, at Robles in 2011, went to Foster Elementary School, was an AP at Sofa Springs, Woodson, Cleveland, and now gets a chance to transition up to be the new principal of Cleveland Elementary School, Mrs. Christina Copeland. Congratulations. Listen here, keep that smile. You're going to need it. Just kidding. It's been a hard two years in education. It's going to only get better. Also, we have 17 years of dedicated education, you know, individual that has worked majority of her career in inner city, has, was a second grade teacher at Sofa Springs, was a reading coach at James, was an assistant principal, I believe, around 20, 2005 at Witter, moved a school from a D to a C, and then also was an A, an AP at Folsom. She is a new principal at Folsom Elementary School, Mrs. Jennifer Penny. Congratulations. Is Dr. Smith here this evening? All right, Doc, come on up. 15 years in education, began his career in 2007 in Pinellas County. Transitioned to be an AP in Pinellas at many of the schools, and also was a, you know, in 2020 became the principal of Prince de Leon, right? Is elementary, or middle school, elementary school. Now gets a chance to transition to foster school, has a track record of moving schools, really energetic, bringing communities together and culture together. Congratulations, Doc, you are the new principal at Foster Elementary School. Congratulations. Welcome. Then we have a leader that has made some significant strides in Hillsborough County. I don't know if Daphne's here this evening or not. She is, Mrs. Four Queen, she has moved a school related to, you know, sold them partnership from an F to an A, had a chance to go to Kimball and moved that school, has some of the greatest gains from an F to a C. She is a great leader, she is dynamic leader, she is focused, she's like me, she's new principal, walking fast. That's what she does. She's a go-getter. The new principal at Just Elementary School, Mrs. Daphne Four Queen, congratulations. Thank you for your leadership. You've been awesome. Congrat. All right. Last one, last leg. Longtime educator, was a resource teacher in Ruskin area, an AP at Ruskin Elementary School, an AP at Lincoln Elementary School in Plant City. Strong about relationships, strong about culture of care, really understands core values, is our new principal at Lamb Elementary School, Mrs. Shawnet Singleton. Congratulations. Also, next leader, you know, graduated from Ohio University in 1995, transitioned to be able to teach elementary, middle school, high school, alternative settings in Texas and Ohio, has been in Florida since 2011, done some remarkable work as an ESE specialist, was at Lopez, was at Oak Grove, and then is a site administrator for Lopez, and this has been a magnificent leader. We've had a chance to go to your graduations, you do a great job, share your, your passion, your vision, is now the new principal at Lopez Exceptional Center, Mrs. Sarah Swanzel. Congratulations. All right, last, we have an individual started in Hillsborough County in 2001, started as a ESE specialist, was an ESE department chair, was an AP at Spoto, Simmons Career Exceptional Center, also an ESE Regional Supervisor for Transformation Network. This is our new principal at Willis Peters Exceptional Center, Mrs. Kara Sosanich. Yasanich, sorry. Yasanich. Congratulations. We'll get that right, Yasa. Congratulations. Give him a round of applause. Congratulations to all of them. Hard work, continue, always say it, it's an exciting moment to know that family and friends that are here, you, please continue to make sure and you support them. They are going to throw their, you know, their hard work into helping children and protecting the working conditions of adults, but they're going to need that support factor inside and outside of the school day. So thank you and congratulations, last round of applause. Good job. All right, that's it.
Thank you and congratulations to the leaders, and I'll just give a moment so that way everyone can exit before we continue on with today's agenda. Okay, the following items will now be heard. C 402, C 501, C 601, C 608, C 612, C 613, C 614, C 615, C 17, C 18, C 19, C 20, C 21, C 22, C 1001, C 1201, and C 1202. We'll go ahead and begin with C 501, the proof of the naming of the cafeteria at Buchanan Middle School. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am. This is an opportunity to approve the naming of the cafeteria at Buchanan Middle School after a longtime Hillsborough great leader, an individual that has had 24 years of experience in Hillsborough County, 12 of those years as a principal at Buchanan Middle School. The faculty community all respect this individual, what he has done, and continues to be a great leader. He is a man that, that never stops working for children, always building a great culture, working on talent management, but he really is and has the heart for this community, and that is Mr. Scott Helgenberg. Congratulations to you, and this is my recommendations to the Board.
I need a motion, a second to approve item C 501. I have a motion by Member Washington, and I have a second by Member Vaughn. Member Snively and Member Vaughn, you pulled this item. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I just, I like anytime we're going to name something after a school for it to be on the discussion agenda so we can talk about it, but just in general, I'm so glad that, you know, we're honoring you for all of your years of service. You dedicated your life to that school, and we're better for it, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. And just really quickly, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hildenberg, everyone calls him Mr. H. He was my assistant principal for many years at Franklin Middle School, and he has just dedicated his entire life to students, not in, not just in school, but off the field too, in baseball. He's really committed to working with students, the most at-risk students, working in Title I schools his entire career, and I just want to say congratulations, and we really appreciate all the years and everything that you've done for our district. Mr. Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. H, we go back a long ways, many, many moons are a long time ago, but I want to say congratulations because you have always been a stand-up person, have done a great job in education, you're well-deserving of this. done a great job in education you're well deserving of this.
Thank you members please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Next is 618 initiate the process to change the existing school mascot at Chamberlain High School Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes ma'am to the Chair first and foremost I want to thank you know all the community members that came out and spoke this evening we understand the the sensitivity of this this decision we understand that there's been a long history of related to traditions at Chamberlain and also how the mascots played a major instrumental part of who those individuals are who they who attended you know however you know tonight my role and responsibility is to engage the board on the process that was taken from the school district when I first came in in 2020 there was there was prior conversation I think around 2018 2019 about changing mascots and those mascots were changed at the elementary and middle school level and there were two high schools that were not adjusted East Bay being one and Chamberlain being the the other one as I came in and was asked to be able to look at this process COVID hit and we were trying to drive the school district through a pandemic to really focus on the well-being of our school school district this community at the same token of our employees the process got pushed back a little bit and after engaging with civic leaders community members at the same token with with Title VI also with school leadership you know we decided that the best thing is is for this process to be done at the school level and this process really to be worked through through students who are currently you know at the school to be able to determine whether or not there needs to be adjustment or recommendation made to our mascot through the the chief of diversity equity and inclusion Mrs Monica Ver Torado led this initiative with with both high schools and I would turn this over to her to talk about the process and what went in place related to the decision to bring this recommendation to the board this evening.
Good evening thank you for the opportunity to present really it's gonna be the the students sharing the process that they went through the recommendations that they have developed through very thoughtful careful process but to just give a little bit of context what was presenting to both presented to both student governments was what's similar to a problem of practice or an AP advanced type of project where you're given you know a problem and so here's the problem is whether or not your school should consider re-mascotting you know based on advocacy from Native American community as well as concerns that you may have had and from members of the student body so they did an amazing job both schools they they investigated the manner they invited both alumni groups to come and meet with them they spoke with our Title VI parents they did independent research they created presentations that were shared with the student body and the faculty and then they created surveys for both the student body and faculty and all student body and faculty of both schools have the opportunity to participate but today the recommendation from the Chamberlain Student Government Association was that the school based on the totality of the information should request that the board consider that they have the opportunity to move forward and move forward with the renaming or re-mascotting process rather for their school so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr Jake Russell now the principal and he will be introducing our two representatives from the Student Government Association and they'll tell us a lot more thank you.
Thank you Monica and thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board and superintendent. I wanted to give a little context to be fair to everybody that's on the dice because I'm really the only one in this process who's been there since 2017 some of you were elected after that and obviously Superintendent Davis came in in 2020 so my arrival was in 2017 Chamberlain was in a in a very difficult situation we had received two two D grades when I arrived and my job was to try to turn the school around I was focused on doing that as as an instructional leader my focus was directly on instruction and and what we could do to to improve the school there were some traditions that were definitely in place when I got there in 2017 and I'll be honest I jumped right in I I jumped in and I was part of the process of homecoming with some of the traditions that were in place and I'll be honest I felt a little uncomfortable doing it but I was gonna do anything legal to get this school turned around and I wanted excitement in the school but I will be honest it was a little bit uncomfortable being being part of that ceremony interestingly in 2018 the the Title VI office along with the diversity office Monica wasn't there but it was a different person and they invited us into a meeting to discuss the mascot and in that process there were some things brought to my attention that were that I would consider offensive they were brought to my attention some of the things that happened in that short time I was there and some of them had happened for years and those were things that that I was directed by the superintendent at the time and the district and and working with Title VI office to clean those things up and to change some of the the celebrations and processes we had in place so that that took place in 2018 the Title VI office worked with us they recreated some images provided an attire for me to wear that was appropriate according to Title VI but honestly that didn't feel comfortable either as a principal. I'm an educational leader I want to move instruction I want to move teachers to push our kids to where they need to go and you know honestly when when you look at what the kids were doing at that time it kind of took away what was happening in 2017 where all the all this energy around the mascot so what I wanted to make clear to the board and to the alumni and to the Title VI offices is right now I think we are at a time where it is time to change and and I'm gonna say that because the traditions and the and the activities that took place that got the school so excited are not exist they're not in existence right now and I have racked my brain with Terry Cisco the Title VI office included and I I don't know a way to keep the chief as if our students are offended by it so I'm gonna let them present their findings but I wanted you guys to know where I was at as well because I have to lead this school and I have to lead the students and and our kids they did an amazing job researching this they took it seriously I'd hire both of them they're amazing and I want to turn it over to our president Lili and Leila and I did call her by her nickname.
Good afternoon honorable board members and superintendent my name is Leila and I'm the treasurer of SGA of class of 2022 I would like to start off by saying I'm extremely thankful for the opportunity and letting me speak as class of 2022 I've spent the last four years attending Chamberlain High School although these past few years have been tough due to COVID and having to put our traditions on pause this year student government we gathered information on our school's background we started off with meeting alumni from different classes we took notes and asked some questions on our meaning of the meaning of being a chief as well as their past experiences and traditions that our school Chamberlain High School has had we also conducted a meeting with Title VI whom expressed their meaning of what it means to be a chief and their culture as well as how society views them after meeting with alumni and Title VI SGA gathered notes and research which led to making a PowerPoint now I'd like to pass it on to my classmate Angelique who's the senior class president of class of 2022.
So this slide right here is just a recap of the process during the mascot case study. Under the superintendent Jeff Akins a group of Native Americans had reported that Hillsborough County schools with mascots and tradition that relates to Native people are very offensive in their culture requesting them to be changed to this date only elementary and middle school identified with this said mascot and traditions has been changed one of the remaining schools in question is Chamberlain High School. Where we are now due to the change and superintendent and the COVID-19 pandemic the process to address the remaining schools were put on hold as if late as late 2021 the request to continue the mascot and tradition change has been approved for further review this year Hillsborough County School District reached out to Chamberlain High School SGA to research the vigorous perspective regarding our mascot and traditions. Chamberlain High School located Tampa Florida established 1956 mascot is a chief the traditions were the harvest moon the green corn dance the powwow wearing of the headdress and imitating Native dance these traditions has been placed until 2018 2019 school year.
After meeting with Chamberlain Legacy Alliance their stance on the mascot and traditions were to completely keep them their perspectives were seeing homecoming traditions as an honor to Native people and continuing their culture they also mentioned how there's a possibility of losing alumni support if the mascot changes they view traditions as cool and different since no other school had a similar name they wanted to stand out they also mentioned how if we are educated on the traditions we could do them the right way and educate These photos being shown is a visual representation on the traditions that Chamberlain High School has had as you can tell there's chief vets the homecoming queen and king and other classmates from band wearing headdresses. Unfortunately this video got taken down today but we'll play one of the other videos that shows Chamberlain High School band parents senior stand up during 2010. were to completely change them their perspective were that the mascot was chosen when Chamberlain High School was predominantly white school and silver rights and segregation was still going on Native Americans didn't have rights until 1974 yet they were still being mistreated. They also mentioned how the traditions being done weren't performed in a correct manner such as mocking stereotypes of Native people they also stated how can people honor our culture if they do not understand it it's not an honor to be somebody else's mascot and be made fun of.
One out of five Native American teens attempt suicide due to the stereotyping while schools and sports teams choose their mascot related to Native American people US government banned Native from engaging in their tribal traditions such as prohibited to speak their native language had to wear more American clothes instead of their tribal wear cut their hair if it was too long practice their tribal practice their tribes and spiritual belief the US government also forced Native American childrens to attend indigenous industrial and boarding schools to make more to make them more Americanized and erase their culture.
This is an example of the Fox News that we presented to our students and classmates that explained to them showing how this is a nationwide issue.
There has been a slow yet gradual fight to remove Native American mascots nicknames and imagery from sports.
It needs to be completely eradicated.
One person at the forefront of that fight for change is first-year Yale University student Madeline Gupta.
Our imagery should not be used by the Braves or by any other sports team whether national high school or state level.
She's from the Sioux St. Marie tribe of Chippewa Indians of Northern Michigan she says while some sport logos may seem harmless to some it's still a harmful misappropriation of Native history and communities.
A lot of these sports teams painted as something fun and something light and something to be proud of where it really skates over the broader harm that has been done to our communities and the need for reparations for those.
Director of multicultural education and training over at Quinnipiac University Damian Lane says the use of mascots can foster painful memories of American history and colonization.
We owe it to ourselves to dig into some of the history of of where we are and that's the only way that we're going to grow as human beings right is to learn about ourselves and to learn about other cultures.
Gupta agrees and says moving forward she wants people to know renaming and rebranding a team is simply a first step on the long journey of systemic issues.
We also need to encourage these teams and the communities who support these teams to educate themselves and each other on the true histories of Native communities and true contemporary issues.
In New Haven Raquel Harrington Fox 61 News.
After our research we wanted to get teachers and students input on whether to keep or to change the mascot and traditions of Chamberlain High School all voices should be heard especially those students and staff that currently call Chamberlain home we gave this presentation to students and staff and asked them to take a short survey to share their opinions. 418 students took the survey and shared their opinions 33 of them participated in their opinion 58 of those surveyed believed that mascots and traditions were offensive 64 of those surveys believe we should change the mascot and traditions.
These are a couple examples on what the students had to say the ones I wanted to change them mentioned I think using any human or race as a mascot is extremely offensive and if we do change it there are animals and creatures with the same color as our current school colors another also stated I think that people who are not a part of the Native culture should have a say yes the mascot is part of the school's legacy but this is someone's culture that is being appropriated others that thought about keeping it mentioned I think that we should keep the name but change the traditions the traditions we do are offensive and should be changed if they are changed we should keep just the name because the name is not offensive if we are respecting it others said I definitely can agree so some people and on how they view things I say to take away the dances and dressing as them now for our mascot I agree to keep it because it is an honor to have them as our mascot and they should feel honored too the last one also said someone's culture shouldn't be a representation of a diversity of people.
49 students staff members took the survey and shared their opinions almost 50% of the teachers participated 59 of those surveyed believed that mascot and traditions were offensive 71% of those teachers surveyed believed that they should change the mascot and traditions.
These are what the teachers had to say the first one stated the manner it has been used for the 12 years I have been here has been offensive I believe though we can keep the chief's name if we educate our students and staff and represent the name with respect. Another stated this mascot was established by an all-white community that then would dress in a black face to portray a chief it's time for our school to create a new more inclusive culture one that is reflective of the cultural diversity that this school now contains others said human beings shouldn't be reduced to a mascot if any other groups were used as a stereotyped mascot there will be there will be far more objections the last one also stated I feel keeping Native American traditions around keeps them relevant too so I not forgotten our traditions should be thought of honoring them not making fun of them or degrading them.
We agree with the students and staff survey data that the mascot should be changed.
With so many traditions already being stripped away we are eagerly waiting for the opportunity to build a culture of the school and set the school up for success in the coming year changing the mascot does not change any history or memories that Chamberlain High School has had.
We should be able to move forward and improve as a society with no disrespect of others. Thank you for your time everybody.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Does this conclude the presentation?
Yeah, there was a slide that said questions.
No, we will move to questions after I get a, after we go through a motion. Or no?
Okay, so then I have one other piece that I've got.
Yes, let's go ahead.
So, Lili and Leila, thank you again for taking time out of your summer and coming here and presenting. You did great work. I also want to thank Shannon McLaughlin, who's over to my right. She took over the student government position in the middle of this, so imagine that. You are teaching your six periods. The principal comes and says, "Hey, our student government sponsor left and went to Pinellas County," which I'm still chapped about. But Shannon has stepped in and done an amazing job. So, thank you, and I know this was a difficult thing to take over, so I appreciate you being here, and she'll be available for questions as well. One thing I was asked to kind of present and go over and to talk to alumni as well is, from '56 into 2022, regardless of the school's, the board's decision, that is, those students are chiefs. And just to squash rumors, I'm not a big social media guy, but I saw some things, and I want to make it clear that Title VI Office wants to keep the tile and the bronze mascot in the hall as a memory and a fact of what happened, because it was there, and it happened, and we have to honor that. The trophy case is not going anywhere. Now, some of the signage on the building and things on the football field, those are things, if we do change, that we would have to change, and there's a process for that. And that process would be for me to work with my regional superintendent, Mr. Gary Brady. And what I plan on doing is working with a consultant that I've already talked to if this does go through, who will be free of cost, sir. He won't cost a dime. And what this gentleman has presented to me and what he does is he brings in schools. Lately, he's been having to do a lot of this work around the country, as schools around the country have had to change. And the chief is a positive symbol for our alumni. Leadership is what emulates from that, and what his job is going to be is to help me find a mascot that emulates what the alumni feels and the pride they feel, so that our new students can have something to rally around next year. And that process would allow me to consult the alumni, because we've got to know exactly what those words are that it means to them. We've got to know what our student body feels about it. I've got to lead those teachers, and I've got to know how they feel. And I also want to address that every student saw the presentation. Every student. Lili makes amazing QR codes that you can just put your phone up. Every kid has a phone, and they take the survey. The fact that four hundred and eighteen took it and eight hundred didn't, to me, says something about the apathy of the entire feeling about the school. So, I am, I feel like that is a fact as well. However you want to review that, it is up to you. The teachers were at a faculty meeting, and we only have eighty teachers, so it's a little more than a little more than fifty percent. And that was the information they were provided. They were given the same presentation, and they had the QR code that Lili made, and they were able to go in on that. So, we know there weren't any duplicates, there weren't any people that weren't part of Chamberlain, just to clarify that. Now, when doing that, we have to, again, I have to work with the current student body. I have to work with the teachers, I have to work with the alumni. And then I have to work with vendors, too, if there's something that needs to be drafted, and work with my regional superintendent to get that approved. And I'm looking at timelines. I don't want to reveal those now, because I don't really know exactly how long the process will take, but I do think if it moves forward, we could act in the fall when the students return. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve Item C-618. I have a motion by Member Washington, and I have a second by Member Gray. Okay? And we've all pulled this item, so please, it's open for discussion. We'll begin with Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Russell, and students, for doing the survey. As I looked at some of this video here, I was the principal at Chamberlain High School twenty-five years ago. Things have changed. Times has changed. You know, when I look back, we would have never had no boy in there clowning like that when I was the principal at Chamberlain High School, because we had pride in what we did there. But it doesn't mean because time has changed. And time changing makes a big disparity there many a times. And people don't like change, because change is difficult, because you've got to accept something new in life. And making a change, just like Angie Mama on pancakes, we made a change. People, we had it for years, and nobody thought about it, but when you think about it, that's discrimination of a black person. You may like it, but at the end of the day, you've got to respect, you've got to respect that he's not doing what he's supposed to do. Also, how about, you know, I would not be said here, and I can tell y'all some stories, I would not be said here if it not have been for change. I can remember back in the days before, and I was a junior in high school, we didn't have no black person on the board. Blacks had their own boards, and whites had their own board in the school system. I'm not going to debate that, sir. My, what I'm saying is you've got to change, and it's time to change. We, I have to respect students for what they do and teachers. And I got a call today, in fact, I'm glad you said that, because I got a text today. A person texts me and said to me, "Mr. Washington, you know, whatever decision you make, I know it's going to be right." So, the decision I'm making is, we've got to be on the side of the students. Students have a right, and we've got to listen to students sometime. That's why I was just a principal. That's why I enjoyed being a principal, listening to students and teachers. And we've got to do what we think is right, and we can't do nothing else. So, as of now, I think they did a great job, and thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Gray?
Superintendent Davis, did you want to say something?
Yes, ma'am. I'm just going to ask everybody to be respectful in this process. This is, and I'm sorry, this is not a banner back and forth. Be professional, respect the conversation. This is the role and responsibility the board is to have and engage in this type of conversation. So, thank everyone for being here, but allow the board to have that professional interaction.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. And once again, you know, we had public comment, and please, we are, this is not a communication. This is a business meeting, so we always want all of our, everybody here, but this is a business meeting, so please, there's no comments. This is the time for the board to comment and communicate and discuss this. Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Well, Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Principal Russell, you have certainly changed the culture since you have arrived at 2017. Everything from PBIS, Positive Behavior Incentive Supports, to the Junior Achievement, and now, of course, you know, the pulse of the students have always been front and center in your heart and in your work. But I also want to thank each of the alumni. Indeed, I have been, I'm actually about the same age as most of you, and I understand tradition, and it's very, very critical in my mind. And it's very, you spoke very respectfully, and I just want to say I appreciate the heritage that you gave and the dignity that you gave Chamberlain, and still do, still do. And I know you love your children, the children at Chamberlain. Chamberlain folks, student government, I taught student government for almost two decades, and I definitely believe that our students have matured as they should and have shown leadership as you should. The world's shake, Washington, the population, my son reminded me this morning, you know, we have changed, we have changed. And diversity, we should be very prideful and very proud of the various cultural groups in our schools, and we are mighty proud of each of you. We are very, very proud of each of you. Took a lot of courage to do what you're doing and saying what you're saying. And if we don't listen to our youth, if we don't believe in the very core of why a school board is here, it is because of the welfare of all students, then why are we here? We care what you say. We care what you will do in the future. You are our future. Please be reminded of that. We love every one of you, and be comforted by those who are supporting you right now. Last, there is a tremendous need for us to move forward. You all haven't had a whole lot of symbolic symbols to be proud of and to really embrace, and right now, your gymnasium, there are certain things that have to be put into that school, so you can have pride and honor of your school and your peers, and of course, you're going to be future alumni. My time is up, so I have thirty seconds. Thank you, Member Vaughn. Again, but I want you young ones to remember this. Those who spoke today, they have tremendous investment in that school and the honor of that school and the privileges that you all have endowed. So, please learn from the alumni. Please respect their hearts and their minds as well. So, with that being said, the hook is coming. I have to stop speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. I'm imagining I'm probably going to have to get back in the queue, because I have a lot to say about this. But, you know, in general, first, I want to speak to the student body government. Oh, this is going to be hard for me not to cry. So, it's okay to cry, because these are passionate things that we're talking about. But I had the honor of watching you guys present this the first time. And something that really stayed with the whole time was when you mentioned how throughout the process, the alumni had mentioned to you that they might not support you, and that the things at your school that they've given to you are some of the things that you value most, that you look forward to, and that you show up every day for, and you're excited about. But even with the threat of that, even with that threat, you stood up and you did what you thought was right, and you voted for what you believed was right. And for me, that is so inspiring. I see the leaders of tomorrow in you. So, as hard as this is today, and this is hard, governance is hard, to see that at the risk of losing something that you valued, what was more important to you, what was doing what was right, and moving forward and doing progress is so inspiring, and I am so proud of you. So, thank you for that. So, I just want to say that. The other thing I wanted to point out was, I was not a fan of letting the students decide originally. You know, I was concerned that no matter what process we did on both sides of the coin, there would be concerns about the process, that no matter what we chose, people wouldn't be happy, and I was concerned of the burden on the students. And I know you're not choosing this, I know you're just guiding that, I want to make that clear, you're just giving us guidance. But once we went down that path, I resigned myself to supporting whatever you guys decide. Whether the process is flawed, that's for you to make those decisions. Whether people don't agree with it, you leaned in, you did what we asked from you, you did the work, you were thoughtful about it, you were engaging, you tried to include everybody that you possibly could, and you came with your best recommendation. And regardless of which way this went, on either side, East Bay or Chamberlain, I said from that moment, once we decided we were going to let you guide us on this and give you input, give our input, I was going to stand behind you. Because when this school opened in 1956, is that the date? The students were the one who chose the mascot. And when I see all of you come today, and I hope that the people who come to spoke to say that they're respectful about this meant it, even though I've heard some comments that don't lead to that, they were empowered and engaged, and you can see by choosing their mascot how much it meant to them, and you guys deserve the same thing. You deserve to feel engaged and empowered by your mascot and engaged in your school. And so, I just want you to know, no matter what, I support you 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just to give a little bit of numbers to this, you know, I'm a numbers person, is right now in Chamberlain High School, we have nine hundred and sixty-nine students that represent Black and Hispanic students, and the total amount of students in this school right now is 1,202. So, it's a high amount. Fifty-one percent are Hispanic, and twenty-nine percent are Black, representation of the school. And where I'm going with that is that when we're looking at changing the mascot, an oppressive, when we're looking at an oppressive culture, or a culture that's been oppressed, the Black and Hispanics have been a representation of that throughout history as well. And so, I need to ask this question. When was this survey sent out, and how long was it provided for the survey to be completed?
This came out in, if I recall, February. Gave us about a month to try and put it together. Took a little longer than that, we had to research. And then, the way we designed it, I didn't think this was an auditorium presentation. I thought it was a classroom presentation, so we got school business for our student government students, and they went to every English class in ninth, tenth, and twelfth? Or was it the opposite? Every social studies, ninth, tenth, and twelfth. It was because of testing. The eleventh-grade social studies teachers did not want to be interrupted, because their EOC was coming up. I just couldn't remember the context of that. So, they went to every class and gave the students the opportunity to view the video and then present on it or vote on it. And then the faculty meeting was done at a typical Tuesday faculty meeting at 7:30 in the morning. Shen, do you want to add anything?
It was also posted on our online platform, Canvas, for the entire two-week window that the survey was open, so students had access to that. And the QR code itself was posted on, like, every wall in the school, so they had ample opportunity to take the survey.
Okay, I'm also going to give another number, because in Chamberlain, we have sixty-eight students that are homeless. And also, during this year, we had one hundred and thirty-five Black students and eighty-two Hispanic students that have been suspended. So, possibly during this time, these students were not able to take the survey, and maybe possibly that's why only four hundred and eighteen students were able to take the survey. So, to give a little bit of perspective to this number. And, you know, when withholding is a typical action of hurting people, when they're trying to push you to do something that they want you to do, especially when it's doing things against the grain of what you want. I want to thank the students who so boldly came and presented to us, you know, how they feel and how they talk about this survey. You know, when the adults are the ones who are supposed to be leading our young decision-makers, you know, for their future, to be change-makers, to help them and educate them to be change-makers, we're supposed to be encouraging them to step out of the box, to take chances, to take risks, and, you know, not to threaten them about withholding funds to make changes.
Thank you, Member Perez. You can get back in the queue. Thank you so much. Member Snively?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So, I just wanted to thank everyone who, especially the students, who have gone to many lengths to attempt to get the information from their fellow students that would help them make, and help us make decisions. You know, this is an interesting time. I wanted to also acknowledge that there are so many people, so many stakeholders, that have a voice in this, and there's kind of an implication that the student voices were not heard or appreciated, and I have to disagree. I think they were heard and appreciated just as much as alumni voices were, as well as stakeholders and community members. I wanted to go back briefly. I'm assuming you can still hear me. I can't hear anything.
We can hear you, Member Snively.
Okay, all right. It's very, the audio's a little challenging. Back to the first speaker, the Honorable... Back to the first speaker, the Honorable Tamara Shamburger, who came to talk about Policy 2900, made some very valid points. We, as a board, had put that to bed back in 2019, at least we thought. And that was the intention behind Section C of Policy 2900. So I wanted to ask Mr. Porter what the implications are of breaking our own policy or if we need to go back and change that policy first.
So yeah, I'm happy to talk about that. First of all, you're not violating the policy. The policy very clearly provides the board the opportunity to name or to change any mascot. This was a new policy, and I'm, Member Snively, Member Gray, and Member Perez will remember that before this policy was introduced, the board was not involved in choosing mascots. That was a school-based decision, and the superintendent had a process in place for that that involved the community, school community and the community at large. This policy was adopted to be intended for new schools going forward to not have mascots that could be offensive. And it was specifically designed not to be retroactive. That doesn't mean, though, that you can't change the policy. So the fact that it was not retroactive meant that schools with policy or mascots that might be considered offensive were not impacted. But the district made a decision and the board made a decision that elementary and middle schools that had mascots that needed to be changed were changed and the high schools were not. And that process has been continuing since then. But the policy specifically gives the board the authority to change mascots when the superintendent provides a process for you. You've heard the process that was used for both Chamberlain and East Bay, and that's consistent with the policy. Again, this policy was new and allowed the board, for the first time in the school board history, to be involved in the naming of the mascots. If you wanted to not be involved, you could review the policy and decide not to do it. But you're within the policy language now with this conversation.
Okay. Thank you for that response. I wanted to just set that record. I am a little disappointed because the intent behind the policy was to not go retroactive, specifically protecting Chamberlain and East Bay mascots back then in 2019. So I am a little disappointed that there has been a workaround, if you will. And the process has always been a little bit muddy around the naming of, choosing a mascot anyway. You know, I'm not here to pick any fight, but I do want to represent, you know, a group of people who also have voices and who care very much about history and they care very much about their mascots that they grew up with and graduated from. And there have been a lot of people who made some very good arguments that we received emails from, the petition with 7,000 signatures on it, as well as the people who took the time to come and speak at the meeting tonight. And so I know that I'm probably one of the lone voices that will not support this particular change, but I did want to say that...
Thank you, Member Snively. Thank you, Member Snively.
Okay. Thank you. Please put me back in the queue.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm fair with everybody with the same amount of time. So just a couple...
It's okay. I'm sorry. It's just really hard to tell them.
Yeah, I know. It's hard virtually. Okay. And anyways, for me, I just want the alumni to know, I honestly read each and every email that I received, and I tried to make some calls back. And I really understand the passion and how you feel about that, being traditional and being at the district since 1956 in Chamberlain. I asked my daughter, who is a rising senior, and I asked her, you know, what do you think? And she said, you know, Mom, the name Chiefs is not rude, but I've never seen the mascot. I've never seen Chamberlain have a mascot. When I've gone to games, I've never seen that. And I've never seen any type of mascot that they have. So we have to understand that our students do not have a mascot. The students at Chamberlain High School right now, they don't have a mascot. They have nothing that they can rally behind when they go to football games or basketball games. And we have to really look at that. And you know, the reason I ran for board is because I'm going to be student-centered. And I understand tradition, but I also understand that the students want a mascot that they can identify with, that they can celebrate, that they can do different recognition. We hope that the alumni will continue to support Chamberlain High School. But I have to say that when you don't have a mascot for several years, and these students are in limbo, they can't have a gymnasium, they can't order T-shirts, because the student population has changed. I don't think people realize, 90% of the students at Chamberlain last year were on free and reduced lunch. The needs are so great now, more than ever. We need the alumni more than ever. But does that mean by changing the name, you still can be a chief? You can still recognize yourself as chiefs? But that doesn't mean the new student body needs to be able to surround themselves with a new mascot. They need to be able to celebrate that. I'm not here to say if it's politically correct or incorrect. That's not what I'm here for. I'm here to say that these students, you know, the students weren't excited. That's why they didn't have a lot of students go up and vote, because they're not excited about it, because they can't rally around a mascot, because they don't have a mascot. They have a name, but they don't have a mascot. And I think it's time to give them that mascot. And next, Member Vaughn?
Thank you, Madam Chair Combs. Chair Combs. You know, I just want to, first of all, I think, thank you, Member Washington, for your comments. Because we spend a lot of time on the dais, having a lot of conversations. And one thing that I feel like we've always centered back to was it's about the students and focusing on student voices. And we have a lot of conversations, and a lot of times people say, other board members, we're talking too much about the adults in the room. What we should be talking about is the students. And here we have our students, the leaders of that school, who have been elected, just like we've been elected, by their peers to represent them and be the leaders, right? They didn't just, we didn't appoint them. They went through the democratic process like we did, and they were elected by their peers because their peers felt like they could be the voice for them. And so I just want to bring it back, how we always focus about being focused on the students and that the students should be at the center of our decisions. And I understand that this is very painful for a lot of adults. And I've tried to be very empathetic about that, even though I've seen some horrific comments on social media and I've heard some very disappointing comments coming out of the audience today. And I, you know, I made a point on social media to say, our children are watching us and that we should be a model of behavior of what we expect from our children and our students. So, you know, again, I want to talk about it being driven. You know, I've looked at this policy here, and I don't see where there's a conflict. So I just wanted to give my thoughts on that. I mean, we followed the process from this policy directly. You know, the fact that it won't be retroactive is confusing in general because it's talking about changing mascots, so something has to be retroactive if you're changing things. So, you know, I'd like more clarification on that going forward, but I don't see where there's any conflict with this policy.
Yeah, if I could just hold her time for a second. So the retroactive part was added so that existing mascots would not immediately be changed.
Without a process.
Without a process. And so, and that process was initiated at the time after 2019 for elementary and middle schools, but not for high schools. But the policy explicitly provides that upon recommendation of the superintendent, that the board may change a mascot. It's black and white. So there's no ambiguity about that. And the retroactive was important to ensure that it didn't happen immediately for existing schools, but that there would be a process in place and that the board would have an opportunity to vote.
I appreciate that clarity. The next thing is, you know, one thing that I'm a little disconnected from is, you know, what I've seen from the alumni in general is saying that we want to keep this. We identify as chief. This means so much to us, and we really believe that we did this with the utmost respect. And some people identify as being Native American. But what I'm hearing from the group Title VI, who has initiated this, is no one's trying to take this away from the alumni, that they have said repeatedly, in your alumni meetings, as you advertise things, you can keep the iconography. We're not trying to take this away from anyone. What we're trying to do is give our new students going forward, something that they can reflect on, identify with, and feel empowered by. And that's my time. So we'll see if I get back in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Perez? You still have 30 seconds.
Thank you. I pulled a Member Gray. The last thing I wanted to ask Ms. Vera Torado is what were the East Bay? You know, we're not talking about East Bay. East Bay did something very similar. They came forward with their student body government and said that they didn't want to recommend this. What was the percentage of engagement on their survey? We've heard some people talk about that. Was it similar? Was it completely different? Did they have more engagement? Can you let me know that?
Yes, and I can follow with more specific data, but the patterns of participation was very similar. And you typically see, that's actually a pretty good percent for participation in any kind of survey, when you see that many people responding. So yeah, it was pretty consistent with both schools. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to ask the same question. So the, going forward, they are looking to change the mascot, but the mascot remains the same. You know, they don't remove anything. Like they said, you know, it's going to stay in the, the school will show the chief head and things like that there, right?
Through the chair, they're only going to capture a number of historical elements to show the representation at the school, whether it be a trophy case, whether it be a certain memorabilia. But if the board approves tonight, then we will move to the process and bring to the board next meeting, a potential timeline for implementation for the, for the school district to help Mr. Russell and his, you know, free consultant, which I love, I appreciate it, and the student body, engage with all of the community members, staff members, students to be able to look at identifying a new mascot moving forward. So if that's approved, then that change will take place, and that's going to take some time to interact with the community and all stakeholders.
I know, because a few of the alumni stated that they would work together with the school to make sure that, you know, the name Chiefs remains, but that, you know, that they, the mascot changes. I get that. So it's not going to be erased from history or anything like that. Things will show up, correct?
Yeah, correct. So from my side of it, I had to, went to two high schools in Duval County and Jacksonville. Both those high school names have been changed, both the mascots have been changed. But I still connect myself with going to that particular high school and having that mascot as part of my rich history. So that will remain the same with alumni, and they will show that value, but they'll just move forward if it's, if approved, with a potential new mascot and in naming that process.
Okay. I just want clarification on that in the sunshine. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Gray?
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, calling the question requires a second, and there's no debate on that. So if you want to quit discussion and vote, you can second her motion. Clear the board, please. So Ms. Gray has made a motion to call the question. If you're interested in voting immediately without further discussion, you need a second. Okay, Mr. Washington, a second. You need to immediately vote. If you vote yes, that means, you're not voting on whether to do it or not, you're voting on whether to vote on the main motion. If you vote yes, that means there's no more discussion. If you vote no, the board will continue to discuss. Okay, Madam Chair, the motion passes, so now you immediately go to the main motion, and it will probably be appropriate for the superintendent to repeat the main motion and his recommendation.
Thank you. So my recommendation is to approve, initiate the process to change the existing school mascot at Chamberlain High School, based on student interaction.
Thank you. Please vote when your lights appear.
So if you vote yes, that means you're in favor of the superintendent's recommendation. If you vote no, that means you're not.
And it passes five to one, and Member Snively is saying, stating no. Thank you. We will now move on and give everybody a moment to leave. We will now move on to 402, Superintendent Contract Extension. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We will move to, I'm sorry, to Employee Input. And I want to thank the employees for your patience for coming in and waiting. Even though we hear public comment at the beginning of the meeting, it is sometimes difficult for employees at our district to attend meetings at 4:00 p.m. There are many ways for employees to make their voices heard, including through union representation, emails, phone calls, and one-on-one conversations and public comment at the beginning of the meeting. The board wants to hear from you. With this section of our agenda, we are creating another avenue for employees to speak to board. We're setting aside 30 minutes for employees of the district to speak to the board about any issues on their mind. This is not intended to be a discussion about specific agenda item on tonight's agenda, but rather an opportunity for you to speak to the board about any issues related to your job or district. Each speaker will have three minutes. I will now call the first three speakers. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karissa Danica. I work at Gaither High School. It's interesting that you were going to go to the contract extension for the superintendent, because that's one of the main concerns that I have. And I'm aware that he already received some of the benefits that I actually have an issue with, and it's probably not all the ones that you think. In paragraph four, it states that the school board, along with, that along with being an FRS, the board will pay up to 15% of his gross salary into another retirement account. This would amount to almost the starting annual pay for a teacher. In paragraph 11, the superintendent can use 15 of his vacation days as a cash payout, and if he leaves the district, he receives all accrued vacation time. This seems perfectly reasonable, until you understand that teachers and ELPs and other educators do not get this unless we retire within the district. In paragraph 13, the board pays the superintendent's medical, dental, and vision insurance, but not just for him, but for all of his dependents. Why isn't he paying approximately $500 a paycheck for insurance for his family, but you're asking teachers and ELPs and other educators to do that when they make about 20% of his annual pay? With over $300,000 as an annual salary, he can surely pay for his own insurance like the rest of us do. Or how about the board suggests that he puts his children on Florida Kidcare, which is what teachers and ELPs are suggested to do as well? In paragraph 14, he also receives short-term and long-term disability insurance paid for. In total, these are almost $80,000 in added benefits that a typical employee does not receive. Additionally, since on short-term disability, he earns 60% of his pay. That was not an option in my benefits package, so I actually just had to estimate with the largest one that was possible. So my number may not be off, but it's at least $80,000. Understand, I do not have an issue with the superintendent earning a large amount of money. I have no issues with him getting a phone paid, even though teachers routinely use their own phones to contact parents and enrich their lessons. And I don't have an issue that he has a car and a car allowance because he travels through the huge district. I have an issue with an added 25.8% of his salary being offered as benefits, when those same benefits come at a cost to those who are making much, much less. 30 seconds. I don't think I can touch on my other ones. Maybe one. Safety. After Uvalde, at the end of the school year, I sent an email to the superintendent about how my school is not safe. I've been on the steering committee for three year, for, excuse me, probably three years, and this is consistently a complaint. I know of ways that someone can get into my school. In fact, I had a student, not this past year, but the year before, get on campus last year. And while he was just visiting teachers, he didn't come through the front door. Nobody knew he was there. He could have done something. We need to have a real conversation about how to keep students and teachers safe in a school specifically.
Thank you. And thank you for your patience today, too, for waiting. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Melissa Carl. I'm a teacher at Grady Elementary School, and I wanted to start with celebrating. We had over 14,000 students graduate this year. They made it to the finish line, and this is a tremendous accomplishment, so I think we should all celebrate with that. Thank you. These things are happening because of all the highly qualified teachers in the district, despite the personnel shortage that occurred last year. Presently, there are 976 instructional positions advertised for the next school year. This is an alarming number. As, sorry, I lost my place. This is an alarming number. The question becomes not only how to fill vacant positions, but also how to... The question becomes not only how to fill vacant positions, but also how to retain the educators that you have, which brings me to two areas of concern. Equitable teacher compensation and health insurance cost. HCTA began salary negotiations on June 6th with a plan to provide teachers and ESPs with equitable compensation. Negotiations are continuing this month, and I hope there's a comprehensive plan presented upon which to begin bargaining in good faith. Other states and districts are doing everything they can to both hire and retain appropriate numbers to qualified staff. Going hand-in-hand with the negotiations on compensation is the need to address the costs of health insurance premiums. This past school year, I paid $11,009.08 to provide health insurance for a family of four. This did not include dental insurance. That was just for health insurance. Additionally, the board paid for my insurance. As a teacher, I'm eligible for a pension under the Florida retirement system, yet I do not qualify for state-sponsored insurance. Statute 110.123 allows for state employees to enroll in this program, which provides a much lower premium. Both, sorry, but teachers are excluded. I would ask that you petition the state to include teachers and staff in their insurance program, or find a way to bring down the premium costs to insure families. Again, thank you for your time, and we all benefit if we work together. And please address the needs of teacher salaries and healthcare costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Johnny Green, Vice President. First, I want to give thanks to Ms. Tanja and her staff for recognizing what took place out here today. That was great to just, you know, just, just give the, give the young lady some, you know, a hug and something like that. That was, and even the students, you know, so I thank you for recognizing that and taking care of that. So thank you for that. Today, you know, just hearing so much has happened since last week, one thing that's been brought to my attention about the superintendent contract. One thing that, you know, we are not against someone making more money, but one thing we heard so much over the last two years is recurring expenses. So why are we trying to do a recurring expense to our superintendent when it's, even if it's just adding, adding more years to it, when the contract doesn't end until 2023? So why can't we not wait until after the election to see what happens with that? We have ESPs that are still making below $15 an hour. I understand what the state law says they would do, but some of them are still trying to find ways to even get to work now. So I think one thing that I've always learned, great leaders take care of their employees first, before they take care of themselves. So being a great leader, we talk about so much, is we got to make sure we take care of what's inside the house first. I heard so many people come up here and talk about our students and so forth. Who's in front of our students? Those teachers, those ESPs, daily. What happened today, the presentation, based on, on teachers giving them what they need to come up here and do that. So let's recognize what we have in front of us. Let's recognize that, that, you know, recurring expense, we heard so much over the last two years, that we didn't want to do anything for our teacher, our ESPs, because it's a recurring expense. Same thing happens when you add it to the superintendent's salary as well. Well, we not adding money to it, but again, why can't we just wait until we get close to the contract, which ends in December of 2023, before we even think about doing anything till we take care of our teachers first? Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes, concludes our employee input. We will now have the Financial Advisory Committee come up to do a brief three minutes, and then we'll take a brief break after that.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Davis, Rick Warner, Chair of the Committee. The Financial Advisory Committee devoted much of its time over the past several months to exploring the pros and cons of supporting the placement of the property tax referendum on the August ballot. We were committed as a committee to assure that all members' questions were answered before we asked them to vote on the question. The premise of the referendum would seem to be that the current level of funding is not adequate to accomplish the mission. The most compelling facts which led to our recommendation were Florida's ranking of 45th in 2021 among the states in total per pupil funding. Disgraceful position that our legislature should be ashamed of. Hillsborough received less total per pupil funding than the other four largest Florida districts, or its neighbor Pinellas, and in the case of the two closest peers, Orange County and Palm Beach, over $2,000 less per pupil. And that's a lot of money when you're getting about $11,000 per pupil to start with. The projected proceeds from the referendum of $146 million equate to about $626 per pupil. So that's just putting the dent in that $2,000 shortfall. And piggybacking on what one of the previous speakers just said, Florida's average teacher salary is ranked 48th or 49th in 2021 among the states. Florida's inflation-adjusted teacher salaries have actually declined over the past 20 years. And you hear that every day, of course, from your teachers. And Hillsborough currently has hundreds of teacher vacancies, and I guess 976, according to the lady that was up here, that we're struggling to fill. So therefore, we concluded that significant, excuse me, that significant additional sources of revenue are needed, as attracting and retaining quality teachers and staff are essential to accomplish the school district's mission. The CFO and her team have implemented a fiscal recovery plan that has our district poised to end the school year with a modest operating surplus. However, the structural problem of inadequate funding from the state of Florida is likely to continue. The impact of this inadequate funding is that while our district may be able to balance its books this year, teacher and staff pay is simply, simply not going to keep pace with inflation, market forces, or the pay of other counties that do have a millage, unless we add an additional source of revenue. And finally, the committee voted overwhelmingly in favor of recommending the passage of the upcoming property tax referendum on August 23rd. 12 votes in favor, two abstentions, and one member absent. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you and your committee for all your hard work. We will now take a 10-minute break.
Okay, we will continue. 402 Superintendent Contract Extension. Mr. Porter will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I was bringing forward today the superintendent's contract for consideration of renewal. This board will recall that the superintendent was appointed and took over as superintendent at almost exactly the same moment as the state and indeed the world shut down for COVID. You'll also recall that he was the first superintendent appointed in Hillsborough County for a great number of years that wasn't promoted from within. Most of the contract language in front of you is standard contract language that has been in place for many years with other superintendents and is consistent with other districts throughout the state. There are a few proposed changes. One of the changes is to continue the contract and renew it for until June of 2027. The current contract salary is a represented represents a negotiated salary between the superintendent and the board. It's important to understand the context of that because while the salary is higher than the previous superintendent made, it's lower than like districts throughout the state. And I want to provide some context for the board in that regard. Deval County, which is smaller than Hillsborough, pays the superintendent a salary of approximately 335,000. Palm Beach, about the same size, pays the superintendent a salary of 324,000. Sarasota, which is much smaller, pays their superintendent 350,000. Broward, which is slightly bigger, pays 350,000. And Pinellas, which is considerably smaller, pays the superintendent a salary of 308,000, which is just below this, 308. I want to be very crystal clear for the board, the public, and anyone watching that this contract proposal before you does not give the superintendent an automatic raise. I'm going to repeat that because it's very important. The contract does not give the superintendent an automatic raise. The language that's proposed would only allow the superintendent's compensation to increase if two things occur. 12-month employees get a raise and the board votes to do that. And it wouldn't happen for the first time until next year in 2023. Since the contract's inception, the superintendent has not received a recurring raise. So again, there is no automatic salary increase embedded in this contract. It requires a board vote and it requires that 12-month administrators also receive a raise at the same time. The contract proposal also has an adjustment of the car allowance and vacation days for the superintendent that again is consistent or less than other districts are paying their superintendent throughout the state. It's really important for this board to remember that the only group responsible for the superintendent's contract is this board. Now, as decision-makers, it's very important to receive input from stakeholders, and I know you do that. By stakeholders, I mean principals, I mean teachers, other employees and staff, parents, community leaders, business leaders. That all goes into your decision-making and you receive that input, but you seven are the only ones who vote. In fact, it's one of your most important duties as school board members, hiring and firing the superintendent. It's a function that's embedded in Florida statutes and the Constitution, and again, it's one of your most important functions. You'll remember that pursuant to the contract, the superintendent is formally evaluated every year. The most recent formal evaluation occurred in August and September by this board, and you all provided comments to him. The evaluation is intended to be a guide for for him to understand how he's performing and ways for him to improve his performance if that's something that's needed. The superintendent also receives informal evaluations from you all, from the dais and on a daily basis, and from the other stakeholders I mentioned before, from principals, from teachers, from staff, from parents. The final thing I want to say about this contract is this contract and the prior superintendent's contract are designed to heavily favor the board. And by that, I mean the salary and the benefits are commensurate with the position. And when the superintendent leaves at some point, we want the position to be the compensation to really match the importance of the position of the seventh largest school district. But the length of the contract isn't as important as you understanding that you may terminate the contract at any time with a board vote of a simple majority of four members, and all you do is you pay him the statutory limits of 20-week salary and his sick days and the other benefits enumerated in here. In the past, there have been contracts both in other districts and counties and other jurisdictions that required a much bigger payout, and this district has sort of a historical trauma associated with that. This is a drama-free contract. It's very clean, it's very straight up, it benefits the board more than it benefits the superintendent, and the contract before you is up for your consideration for a vote tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions. Worked with Dr. Whalen and Mr. Gibson on this, and we can collectively answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. I need to motion a second to approve Item C 402. I have a motion by Member Washington. I have a second by Member Vaughn. Member Snively, Member Vaughn, and myself pulled this item. We'll go ahead and begin. Mr. Washington, Member Washington? Oh, okay. Okay, can we, we'll go ahead and clear the board. Thank you. Okay, we are going to open this up for discussion. Member Gray?
Okay. First off, Mr. Porter, I understand clearly what you have shared, and I'm glad that you did make it very succinct. Secondly, we had a tremendous learning curve, Superintendent Davis and the board, when we had, I'm trying to get the right date, but the Hillsborough Association of Supervisors and Administrators, HASSA, we did a very excruciating survey. I had a special call board meeting, which really collectively revealed that there were leadership failures on many levels, inclusive is the superintendent. I believe that was in June 2020, 2020, no, 20, yeah, 2020, 2021, 2021. So what I wanted to say is since then, we formed a principal advisory committee and which I sit in, and Superintendent Davis is there every two weeks, as I am, and we have a middle school, high school, and a elementary school representative. So in fact, we have every school, 246 schools represented, and I can tell you right now, these principals do not hold back. Superintendent Davis has been extremely responsive to the changes and recommendations and all the other, the failures, so to speak, that this survey revealed. And I would not be sitting here saying that because I was the one who brought the survey originally, but I can tell you right now with pure unequivocal confidence that our superintendent has worked his heart out, very important word, heart, and also his head, but he has moved this district forward. And his innovation and his eclectic stance has given our students a burst of energy and our teachers and our principals. There is, there is a lot of progress. We have a lot more to do, and I'll let the other board members perhaps share on that. And that is not to be exempt. The idea that this is a perfection, no, we have a long way to go, but we have made tremendous, and Superintendent Davis, you have made tremendous followed progress with our district, and I'm very, very proud to sit here and say that I know for sure what you've done. And so Karen Perez, who is also countywide, I visit many, many schools, she does also, knows the pulse of this county. So I want to thank you. And also, the big thing, it, no one gets a raise, this man does not get a raise unless all the 12-month employees get one. So, you know, that's, that's number one priority. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. My time's up, but that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Vaughn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, a lot of people thought that the mascot was going to be the most stressful vote, but coming up to this vote, this is honestly the most stressful vote for me because I feel like this item is getting conflated with whether or not I support our superintendent. You know, and a few days ago, you know, I was ready to vote yes for this because I do support Addison Davis. I think that he has come a long way in his leadership, and I appreciate that. I want him to stick around. I don't think losing you would be good for our district. I think that we've all worked very hard to try to work together and build a collaborative relationship, and, and, you know, I see how much your heart is with this county. I know you've made some mistakes when you came in, and it's hard to turn around from mistakes. It's hard to turn those around, but I see you doing the work. I work with you every day. So I don't want people to conflate if I have concerns about this contract specifically from a business aspect of anything of my feelings towards you or supporting you because it doesn't reflect that. So I just wanted to make that clear before I had some discussion about this. However, as I started just kind of looking around at other counties and having conversations with other super, I mean, school board members in other counties, you know, I realized that, you know, we are actually on par and close to, I know you mentioned Pinellas pays 310, but actually they just rehired their deputy superintendent, and from what I read from the contract and what I was told, they actually started out at 290. And the wording in their contract specifically says that the superintendent's evaluation will be tied to any increases in salary, as well as it won't be anything higher than any of their instructional staff, the percentage. And I think that they did that to show solidarity with their teachers and their staff. Also, in Orange County, they just voted to decrease the amount that the superintendent makes. They went from 347,000 to 300,000. Now, they did raise his car stipend, 12,000, so all of that has to be factored in. So for me, I'm looking at this as a business sense. I think a five-year contract, although I hope you stay five years, longer than I'll be here maybe, I think is excessive and a, and a long contract, especially in comparison. We're looking at Miami Dade, who just did a two-year contract. We're looking at other counties who the most that I've seen come through is a three-year contract. And so, you know, since we have been so fragile, and I understand you've been very gracious to say I'm not going to take a raise unless our other staff members can, and I appreciate that you've said that, I think that shows solidarity. The fact that we've been so fragile to say that automatically we're going to do a much higher percentage than what our staff makes and even what our administrators make automatically without talking about reviewing that each month individually tied to, you know, kind of our review, I think is not fair compared to what we do to our staff. So I just have issues about this contract if we want to workshop it, if we want to have more conversation about it. I would love to do that. I felt like it was kind of rushed, although I know it's probably because we had consensus and I consented in the beginning.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. If you want to get back in the queue. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can understand the comments of Member Gray and also Member Vaughn. Mr. Davis has done quite a bit for our school district under extreme circumstances, coming in at a precarious time with the COVID pandemic. He had a Herculean effort to make in order to keep our district together. I do also have some consternation around the, the amount of time that we have not spent on this and have received many communications from just some district staff members, but generally just about, you know, making sure that this is more public, we'll put it that way. Because a lot of times, and I know Mr. Porter and I have had conversation about this particular performance of value, or this particular contract is not directly tied to a performance evaluation. And we have done a performance evaluation for Mr. Davis last fall, but, but there was not a whole lot of conversation about that prior to bringing this to the board for approval. So I have some, also some hesitations about that, about the, you know, the fringe benefits. I'm, I'm glad to see that there's not going to be an increase in salary at this juncture, but, but I do also have some hesitations about the way that this was brought to the board and maybe the lack of transparency around it. And so I'll leave it at that. I'll get back in the queue if there's more conversation about, about those sentiments because I would be apt to potentially postpone it and maybe workshop it like Member Vaughn mentioned, and hold it, hold off to the next board meeting so that more people feel like they have had a, a chance to give us feedback as board members because this is one of the most important decisions that we make. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Snively. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too have a concern, but I want to ask a question because you're asking for this, for this raise, and it's a high percentage, so I want to just ask a question of you, and it's a scale question. On a, on a scale from one to 10, what do you think the percentage of the morale of this district was prior to you coming to this district?
You know, I, to the chair, I couldn't tell you what, what the morale was. I know that the, the school district, you know, feels highly about their, their best efforts, and they always should. So I'm sorry, I don't have the context to be able to understand that, and, you know, we, we looked at the Oskie surveys, it had some blow, some pluses and some areas of opportunity. And then if I looked at kind of currently where we are right now, I think it's really difficult to be able to also scale it because across this nation, education's in a very tough spot due to the fact that all the social unjust, all of the political activities are penetrating our classrooms, and it's just been very hard. So I think it's trying for everyone. Also, you couple that with the, the inflation and all of the additional ass, so I think it's a hard time to be able to identify where we are and where we're going to be. As Ms. Gray said, we have lots of room to grow, and every school district, when I talk to superintendents across this state and this nation, recognize that morale is difficult and complex to be able to capture, you know, currently right now, but we'll keep trying every single day to do so.
So on, on a, on a scale from one to 10, where do you think we are? Where do you think Hillsborough sits?
You know, I think every, everyone in the state of Florida throughout this nation is probably a five, at a one through 10. Everyone in this nation is in the same spot because of, I mean, you heard it the day from teaching, you know, people covering class, teachers covering classrooms, losing instructional positions to be able to field, you know, losing teachers and leaders to go to other counties with surround with, with additional pay. It's just hard. It's been very trying. So I'd say that across this nation is probably in the middle of the road.
So what do you think would take, would get us to get to, let's say, an eight?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is, is as we transition to next year, it's all about focusing on well-being. And, you know, while we have a mental health development plan ready to go for students to wrap our arms around them, I think as we have the next phase of this organization, we did so much in the last two and a half years to really focus relentlessly on instruction. Now it's about continuing to build the trust, compassion, and focus on the well-being of not only our teachers, but support staff and leaders as well. And I think that if we do that and, and really show and demonstrate value to this organization, to our staff, then we'll be able to transition eight. This is why my ask to the board was to approve a mellowage. And I know that, that compensation is not the end-all to be it, but it will definitely help show the continued hard work of our staff by being able to bring additional pay and compensation to them, and then really focusing on their craft and providing, maximizing time, I should say, about how they leverage professional development, what we do in professional development, how they have the autonomy, earned autonomy, to really do some cool things and special things for children. I think that takes a place to be able to rise to get us to that eight.
So in subpar paragraph one, on line six...
So in subparagraph one, on line six, would it look better if instead of saying that the contingent on salary increases being waterproof for 12 month administrative personnel, it would look better to say being administrative teachers ESP raises would be more equitable?
Well, I, I don't think that's an appropriate thing to put in the comment. That's a bargain thing that the teachers have to do. They go, we go through bargaining with that and I don't, I think we need to be very careful about trying to tie it to something that goes through bargaining.
Okay, all right. So, you know, work, working your, that raise out with what happens, you know, with the, with the temperature of the district. It, for me, looks much better like Member Vaughn said, you know. So I appreciate you putting that in the contract as well, you know, being able to get that raise when everyone else in the district gets to raise.
Yes, Mrs. Chair. Our, you know, first priority is always take care of our teachers and instructional staff. At the same token, support staff, they are the backbone of everything that happens, along with our school based leaders and our administrators. Everyone in this organization is a priority and my role and responsibility is to, to make certain that we're fiscally responsible and at the same token, create the compensation that shows and demonstrates value. You know, unfortunately, coming in, we, our hands got tied related to where we were financially. We weren't able to accelerate it in the manner we hoped to do it. But if, as we implement this recovery plan, we are going to get in a better spot to be able to show and demonstrate everyone how much we care and that this is a great place, not only to live and learn, but also to be an educator.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Mr. Davidson, when you came in, you came in a very difficult time. We had a lot going on when you came into the, to the district. And also, you know, you got to look at too that when you came in, you were the first outsider we had and I could ever think of, yeah, from coming from the outside. So that made a difference because people had to learn each other. You know, it's just like when you, when you get into something new, you have to learn each other to be prepared. And I know House had the, you know, their survey and so forth. But like, like Member Gray said, you have worked really hard to build that relationship. I think you are listed more now because you know, it's uncomfortable when you come into a situation and you're not familiar with it. You had the pandemic going on, you had the budget, you had layoffs. We fought with the mass people and all, all kind of nonsense was going on. I mean, so it was really difficult, but I think you're working to build that group, that great relationship between the, the community. You're in the community, you're building a relationship with the administrators, which is very important. But you still got a long ways to go because we can see we still got to work on academics and, and we, we got to work on suspensions and those things we're going to have to work on. But I think you have really tried, you have faced some challenges that's really difficult. I don't know anybody else could have come in and did any better to say, you know, to just tell the truth. But we, we want to show that we have stability because that's the, that's the key, stability. And by keeping you, we got to have the stability. I, I think it's so important to keep that, that mindset. So we still have a lot of challenges, you know, to go. But I think we are having you here, you're very innovative, you're a hard worker, you're impatient because hard workers are impatient because they want to get the job done. So we, you know, I, I agree. I mean, I think we, we need to just keep going what you have and, and make it be successful and work hard to continue to keep it going. And I know we can. And we just got to, to stick together as a team and work together. And I think we, we, we going in the right direction. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Washington. I also feel like it's really important as a district that we have consistency and continuity. And I think that's really especially important right now more than ever. You know, I did my research as well and the salary that you're paid here in Hillsborough County is actually less than districts of other sizes and that's a fact. And P, you know, of course, it's a large sum of money, you know, but that is, if you were a CEO of a large company, you would be making millions of dollars. I mean, people have to realize that because you're making a lot of money, doesn't say that teachers shouldn't make the same amount of money, but that is what the job is paying. And we are actually paying less in the state than, than other districts. Also, I did some research and there's a new survey by Rand that said one in four superintendents are leaving, are imminently leaving becoming superintendent. People are walking away from education at every single level, from teachers to principals to area superintendents, to superintendents. It is hard. You can see in Pinellas County, there weren't 20 applicants. They, they weren't, I mean, I think they, whatever they made a choice, I didn't even pay attention, but I'm just saying that you don't have, you don't have a lot of people who want to be superintendent now because they can go out and work for a private corporation and make so much more. They can do so many other things. So I think for us as a district, for me, I think the contract shows that at any time that we can terminate you, at any time, you don't have to stay for the five years. For me, it's really to tell the district, we have continuity, we have consist, consistency. And I asked you the other day, what are the few things that you think that you have accomplished here in this district? And you gave me a lot of things and a lot of things I agree with. You led during one of the most difficult times during COVID. It was such a difficult time, but you led and you did not know this district and you led from afar. And now you're at the schools, I see you every day trying to engage with individuals and I think that's really important. You also turned the largest financial deficit that any district has ever had in the state of Florida. You turned that around and that meant, that was not a, a, a positive thing. A lot of people were upset and continue to be upset. But it is very difficult to lead when you're funded 49th in the country and 45th in this district. Everything is up against you as far as that. And finally, all the technology, the innovation, so many other things that you bring. So for me, I am in favor of supporting you and supporting this contract. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I was listening to the comments and know full well that when we talk about the amount of years of a contract, one of the biggest oppositions that came when Addison Davis gave his employee employment to us was they were worried, the public, the board members, teachers, et cetera, were worried about how long he would stay. They felt like they were going, he was just going to go back to Tallahassee or he was going to be a Tallahassee man. So we, we, you know, there was a lot of comments on that. Now that we have a contract, we have a man that's doing a consistently above average job as voiced by board members, as voiced just today. Then we hear, oh, we want to shorten up a contract. Well, there's no rationale because if you want someone to stay in town and you want our children to have a lineage of succession of the, of administrators and of teachers, you move, you remove the leader and all of a sudden the, a lot of this will crumble. So that, that's one of the things I noticed from one of the comments. The second one is you can't grow a district unless you grow confidence and trust. If the board members do not give the vote for a contract for this superintendent or split it in half, split it in pieces, then our board is not showing trust nor support. Now, what does that mean? And of course, Florida School Board Association, Carol Cook tells us that if the board is not behind the leader, the academic success of our students will falter. So I would subscribe to this and I'm not the longest serving board and a board member, but, but Member Snively is, but I would subscribe to you this. Unless you show complete affiliation, trust, backing of this contract, which we can get out of any day in May, then you're saying to the public, hey, man, we, we don't know if we're going to keep this man. We might have to go ahead and, and if we do two years, maybe we'll get a better person. The crisis in America now will show and reveal every, to every one of us that there is a shortage of superintendents, there is a shortage of principals, there is a shortage of teachers nationwide. How do you think we're going to do any better? So if we don't start backing a leader that is definitely taking a positive, this district, district in a positive direction, I don't know about greener fields out there. I don't know what you're all seeing, but I, you know, I don't see it out. So that's my, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Vaughn?
Pushed the wrong button. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate everybody's comments and, you know, what I hear from this board, whether we agree about the contract or not, is that we're standing behind Addison Davis's leadership and we want him to stay around. What I do disagree with is having issues with the contract and what it looks like is a representation of whether or not we support the superintendent. And I started off my comments to try to make that very clear that if I have questions or concerns about what's the best decision for us, it's no reflection on whether I support our superintendent or not. And I, and I don't know any other way to make that clear. You know, when we look at how much the contract is at 310, whether that's below starting salary, if you multiply the 4% each year, because each year that's a higher amount that we're adding. It starts at 12,000, then it goes up to 14,000, then I think it goes up to 20,000. Within five years, we're close to a 400,000, no? Okay, I'm glad you're going to answer that. A $400,000 contract and, and that puts us well over, you know, what we would be paying a superintendent. But I don't want to conflate money with how much we value somebody because that's what we've been telling our teachers repeatedly. When it comes to bargaining, we have said to them, the fact that we are trying to be financially responsible and the fact that we can't honor your steps and give you a raise is no reflection of how much we value and that you've shown up every day and you've put yourself on the front lines and we appreciate that. And if we could pay you more and if we could do more, we would. But we can't because we're trying to be financially sound. And yes, I agree that Addison Davis has let us out of a financial mess that he didn't get us into making hard decisions that will forever taint his reputation. He had to stand and make those decisions. And that's not fair, but at the same token, we're not 100% out of that. We're waiting for a millage. So to rush into a five year contract that does, whether or not it's tied to giving other staff member raises, give committing more money, doesn't feel fiscally responsible. So that's what I want to make the point of is that the reasons that I'm saying these or my concerns with the contract or the fact that I wish we had more time to talk about it is in no way, shape or form a reflection of whether or not I support our superintendent and want him to be successful. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I know you have some response and I appreciate it, Mr. Porter.
Yeah, I would like to let Ms. Snively finish and then I do have a statement to read from Dr. Hahn. And then I, if we could let Ms. Snively finish and then I'll answer some of the questions and make some general comments, give Ms. Hahn's comment and then answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the comments that the board members have made. It helps, you know, with the vetting process. I think that the, I'm fine, I'm okay with the contract as it is. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Porter. As far as the increase in salary is concerned, I think it's important that we're competitive. I appreciate the comments of other board members when it comes to, you know, appreciating what our superintendent has had to, had to contend with, but also appreciating that, you know, we need some consistency in our, in our school district. And, you know, when, when I as an employer have to think about my employee, I kind of make a list of pros and cons. And when the cons outweigh the pros, that's when I have to start really rethinking the relationship between employer and employee. Well, in this situation, I still think that our pros definitely outweigh, outweigh the cons. Does the superintendent still have a few things that, that as far as professional development that, that he could work on? Yes, he's certainly not, certainly not perfect. No superintendent is. And I, I appreciate the principal group that meets with him to give him feedback and guidance. And I would encourage them to continue doing that. I, I am, I'm not a member of that. I know Mrs. Gray is. I'm not sure how you get to still be a, a part of that without any other board member because I'd really, I think that more board members should be involved in, in that or none at all in those meetings so that principals can, you know, feel, feel free to say and speak their mind without a board member in the room. But, but I think I would encourage you to continue doing that with principals because I think their feedback is extremely important. So, so at this time, for, you know, consistency sake and for, to, to support all of the, the difficult decisions and difficult work that the superintendent has, has done for our school district, it makes sense to support the renewal of this contract. The only thing I will say, and I know I'm running out of time, is the next time this comes up because that will happen again, is can we have a little bit more transparency, a little more discussion on it, perhaps a workshop around it? I know it's not tied directly to an evaluation, but in the rest of the world, the evaluation usually comes in, you know, immediately preceding a renewal offer or an offer of continued employment. And so perhaps we can talk about doing that differently the next time around. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Snively. Mr. Porter?
First, before I get into my attorney comments, I'm going to read a statement from Dr. Hahn. To Superintendent Davis and my colleagues, I want to share my apologies for not being in attendance for today's meeting. I had a previously scheduled commitment. However, through this statement, I want to share with everyone my strong support for the renewal of the superintendent's contract. I'm going to place that into the record to reflect Dr. Hahn's comments. And now I do want to make some general comments and attempt to answer some of the questions and issues that were raised. I'll start with some of the comments that Ms. Snively made about the evaluation. This is really worthy of discussion and it's really important for the board to understand the context and the history of why, unlike other districts, the superintendent's contract is not tied to an evaluation. The contract provides that you must evaluate him every year. As I said in my previous comments, that's an important part of the relationship you have with the superintendent. But here it's designed to give him feedback, how he's doing and if there are ways he can improve. In the past, the evaluation has been used almost as a weapon regarding the contract. And then a decision was made when Mr. Akins was hired by the board at the time to divorce the evaluation from his contract. While there was still a contract and still an evaluation, they were intentionally kept separate. When Mr. Davis became superintendent, that practice continued and it had a lot to do with the feelings of the board about the history and the community feelings about the superintendent and any potential payout when the superintendent would leave. So the contract, his original contract, Mr. Akins' contract and this renewal, keep the evaluation separate from the renewal of the contract. Certainly in the future, that's something that could be changed when you have a new superintendent or if this contract is renewed at some point in the future. But that was an intentional decision on the part of the board for reasons that had to do with history. And that's important for the public and this board because none of you were here at the time to under, well, Ms. Snively was, but you weren't here and you wouldn't appreciate that history. But it's, it looks strange. I understand it looks strange and it's different from other districts. It was intentional and the board had thought behind it. The, the part about the salary, so I know this is sort of frightening that I was trying to do math, but I didn't do it in a vacuum. I had Dr. Wayland and Mr. Gibson and Mr. McCauley. So if the numbers are wrong, they're going under the bus. So we calculated that at the end of the four year, at the end of this, his salary would be approximately 362 if he stays the whole time and the board votes every year for the raise. That's important, not just because it's a reflection of his performance, but it's, it's a reflection of the position. This is the CEO of the seventh largest school district in the country. He is in charge of the largest employment pool in the county. And it's important for this board, and again, I want to make sure the board understands, I'm not representing him, I'm representing you. The lens I'm looking through is what's the best thing for the board? It's better for this board when he eventually leaves for us to be, for the board to be in a position to advertise for a superintendent with a salary that's commensurate with the duties and responsibilities. You'll recall the board members that were here, when Mr. Davis was hired, the 310 salary was considered very high because the previous superintendent was only making 225,000. And that was intentional because nothing's in a vacuum. There's context and history in every decision, but the board was the one that made that decision. And the board was intentional in both situations. And again, the theory here is not an automatic raise. It's up to the board every single year to decide whether to do it or not. And then if you, if the 12 month employees get raises, he can get a raise. And then at the end of his term, the, there won't be as much sticker shock in this district as there was when he was hired. So this board will be able to advertise for a superintendent and the salary will be X and it will be reflective of the duties and responsibility. And again, it won't be a shock to the system because of a because of a leap in salary. So those are the reasons behind this contract. It's very intentional. Everything in here is very intentional, up to the board completely. But, uh, those are the reasons and the context and sort of the history that might put your decision-making in a place where it makes more sense.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Any other comments? Member Vaughn?
Yes, I have a question. Um, so the way that you just worded that, I wanted to clarify something. You said, if we give other administrators 12-month employees a raise, he could get a raise. What I'm wondering-
And let me be clear, he wa, he will get a raise. That's the way the contract is worded.
So I just want to give a scenario, and it's, it's not to project anything, because again, I support you. Um, but let's say something's changed. We give him, uh, he, there's some tension, things change, we give him a poor review for whatever reason, the majority of the board gives it. I know it's not gonna happen. I know it's not gonna happen. However, then we have, we go into executive session, and because our administrators and 12-month employees deserve it, we vote to give them an increase, regardless of, of whether, that's not, we have to give that to then Addison Davis as well, regardless of what we feel his performance is, right? I'm just clarifying these to make sure, that it's not, we can vote to give 12-month employees and administrators a raise, and then separately vote, those are tied and married together regardless. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Please vote when your lights appear. And, and, Mr. Porter, will you just clarify the vote, just so that, that way there's no questions?
So the vote today is to approve, uh, the renewal of the superintendent's contract as found in your backup.
Okay. Thank you. Please vote when your lights appear. Okay, and it passes unanimously. No, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing this. I'm sorry. I'm still, I can predict things. It passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to 601, budget amendments. Oh, Superintendent Davis, yes, let me give you a moment.
So first and foremost-
It's appropriate to say, thank you.
Yeah, first and foremost, thank you so very much. Um, I, I know this is a very difficult decision, and I, and I agree, you know, from Ms. Vaughn, from a business decision, from Ms. Snively making certain that we, this is actively engaged and, and transparent, and, and also being able to focus on, you know, the things that we, we did well in the last year. I would say that, you know, I got better as a leader because of this entire board, and this, this entire board. And this is a, a model for all of our principals and district staff to look, is when someone has an opportunity to improve, that you see the real conversations and crucial conversations this board had with me a year ago, has transformed who I am as a person and as a leader. You know, to lead with compassion, to, to lead with, uh, building relationships, to, to really with a sense of care and to communicate effectively. I could not have done that without each of you. Um, I am committed to this district for many years. I hope that we do have a, a conversation three years from now about a potential extension as well. Because, you know, I got six and a half years left. I'd love for my time to be here to be able to give every bit of my effort relentlessly for the children of Hillsborough County and this community. So, thank you. I look forward to working hard, and, and, and our success is, is, is going to, you know, it has a big ceiling. And it's because these individuals that are out here working beside me left or right, and I care about them tremendously, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Davis. And I, I'm sa, I'm happy to see that it was unanimous. I know how hard that you, your cabinet, and everybody in this entire organization, from bus drivers all the way to our nutrition, everybody has worked so hard. And I want to thank you for your vision and how hard you're working, and, um, we'll continue on. And I know you have one last comment, because I know how you operate.
And I'm sorry, and I say that, the, the rebuild of, of me as a leader in the last year has, has really allowed me to reflect who I am. And not only from a perspective professionally, but also personally. And I, I cannot thank that my family more than anything, with Natalie and the girls for always being there. They're, they've always been consistent and showing up, and I'll continue to do that for, for them as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. We will now move on to 601, the budget amendments for a period ending in April 30th and May 31st, 2022. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna transition this to Mrs. Johnson and her team to be able to give a, a financial update.
Good evening, board members, constituents, superintendent. We will be going over the budget amendment for May 31st, 2022. This will be the last official presentation of the budget amendment for this fiscal year. As you know, we always start off with adopted budget. We start off with adopted budget of $1,556 million, but our total expenditures at that time, we was projecting as being $1,618 million. We was in an operational deficit projected at 61 million, 61.4 million. And we had a beginning fine balance of 147.5. So tracking that 61.4 million, what we was projecting for the fiscal year, the end, um, the any fine balance will be around 86 million, 86.1 million. The next slide is, no, you hardly can see it, but I'm gonna concentrate on column B, C, and D. Column B was the budget amendment you guys did last board meeting, and at that time, we were showing an overall deficit of 85.8 million that you guys approved, and then we was projecting at that time a any fine balance of 61.6 million. So, column C, we didn't bring that, because we didn't have a board meeting that we could present at the time we was building the month of April. We had did, um, minor changes from the fiscal recovery plan, and we showed an overall deficit around 79.8 million. So the deficit was going down, because we changed things in the budget. Um, so we're gonna focus on column D, which is our budget amendment, a revised budget amendment for May 31st. And we're projecting now for May 31st, um, overall, a deficit of only 8 million, 8.1 million. Now, how we got there, we did, um, amendment this month to close out, um, the month of May. We see, we reduced revenues by 3 million from Medicaid. Last year, we had 3 million more. We overproject, because this year, we, half of that was from the previous year. We also received 13.7 at the fourth change, a calculation from the state. We have over 500 more students that were added. Um, local was reduced by 5 million, because that was from our host. We can't attract enough people for that, um, support that program, so we didn't get enough students, so we didn't produce as much revenue. So over on our spinagier side, we did a fiscal, part of our fiscal recovery plan, we did a reduction of around 66 million. And that was from 49 from the attrition part of the plan, 12 million from the spark payment, and then other miscellaneous, um, transfers between the funds. So, on this page, we want to show you where our landing position as of now. So, column F, I'm looking at the year-to-date actuals. Total revenue year-to-date is $1,447 million. Total expenditures is $1,449 million. So we got an overall surplus of 7 million as of, in a May. If we, if we close it today, as of May, May 31st, we would have an ending fine balance of $154 million. But we're not closing, and we got some more expenditures to go. But I wanted to give you a look at the cash flow. We always showing how the cash flow happens. At, when we start the year, we always start with the fine balance. And as you can see, we, we're spending money. Cash is coming in, but our local doesn't come in until around December and January. That's why we have a greater impact of cash revenue. But over time, that revenue, our expenditures catch up with the revenue. So we're projecting for any cash balance around 106 million for this fiscal year. So, year-to-date actual for May 31st, we're overall showing the net change in our general fund is around 7 million positive. So if we end today, like I stated before, we will be ending at $154 million, 154.9 million. But we still have projected expenditures to happen. So if we project those expenditures to happen and don't implement, we still have part of the fiscal recovery plan that are not in, is projected in this number, because they won't be, uh, projected until they show up on the ledger. If we close and do nothing, we will still be at a, a deficit of 8.1 million and a ending fine balance of 139.3. But we are gonna do things, so I'm gonna go over the fiscal recovery plan status update. And as you can see, step one was part, was the enrollment. We did collect all our enrollment, around 18 million of the fiscal recovery plan. Capital transfer, we did 17.6. We still have 11 million left to transfer. We only transfer 6.6 of the fiscal recovery plan. Leveraging of restricted resources, we have projected 9 million. We still got 4 million left. And also staffing attrition, 49, we have covered that, and also the spark payment has been taken care of. So, fiscal recovery plan year-to-date, we starting off with our revenues for May, uh, $1,152 million. We got a, a capital transfer that comes in, is additional 11 million. So we're seeing our projected total revenues around $1,563 million. Our total expenditures at this time is $1,560 million. We got 4 million expenditures to move to restricted resources, and that's gonna leave our projected total expenditures around $1,556. So, the delta between the revenue and the expenditures would give us a surplus. We'll end the year with this, a surplus. It's a minor surplus, but it's a surplus nevertheless. And this is for the operation portion of our general fund, which is gonna be ending at 6.8. We add that surplus to our beginning fine balance. We'll be ending this fiscal year at 154.3 million, which is 10% fine balance. So that's part of the fiscal recovery plan. This slide is just showing the impact of moving additional expenditures to restricted resource with S or 2. We're gonna move another 15 million to S or 2. That's gonna enhance our fine balance, giving us a fine balance around 169.3 million. Also, we still got S or 3. We're planning to move 100 million of additional more expenditures to S or 3, but the overall will leave our fine balance at 269 million, 269.3 million, which is 17%. But you all know, we negotiated contracts, was not included in these numbers, and we projected around 222 million. So it might re, overall reduce our fine balance, but at 22 million, we're still, our fine balance be around 15%. That's it for the presentation.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve item C 601. I have a motion by Member Gray, and I have a second by Member Washington. Member Gray, you pulled this item. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Johnson, just real quick, Superintendent Davis, I'm gonna let you just, uh, chill for just a bit. Uh, not a difficult question, but one that needs to be extraordinarily remarked upon, uh, for the public's sake. Um, and I have to read, just like you did, because some of these numbers are, uh, detailed. So, uh, for clarity's sake, uh, even though it appears we are with a 6.8 million, uh, surplus and a fund balance of 154.3 million, we're going out for a millage. So if I am the public, um, how can I be looking at, we're in the black, yahoo, but how can I be, um, finding myself in a voting booth, voting for a increase in property tax if cognitively I see that our district's in the black?
Well, the capacity, the operation is different from the overall fund balance. Fund balance become one-time resource that you cannot spend on reoccurring expenditures. So if you look at the operation, if we add any reoccurring expenditures on the operational side, we will be back in, in an operational deficit.
Okay, so that's what you're going to say, and that will be convincing?
Well, we cannot give reoccurring salaries to, you know, increases, reoccurring expenses.
Okay, just want to give you some practice.
If you're looking at the fine balance, we're gonna give one time, because that's, it becomes one-time resource. It's not continual resource.
Okay. And, uh, secondly, and perhaps this might bring it out a little bit more, um, how does the proposed increase in property tax, in other words, the millage that we're asking, affect our overall general revenue for the next fiscal year?
Well, we are part of the FEFP, which is required by the state. Anytime when they allocate the revenues, local revenues are in, in that resource basket they allocate to the district. And if local goes up, the state reduce our FEFP by the same amount. So it's a one-to-one relationship.
Okay, so what I'm gonna need to share, and this is not, uh, it's not a criticism, it's a concern, Superintendent Davis, I, I have to say that we need to be more convincing if we are sharing figures that suggest, luckily so, not luckily, but greatly so, that we are in the black, and yet we're asking the public for more money. Somehow, we have got to make it clear that there's a distinction. And, and Ms. Johnson, I know you're, by the way, you've gotten tremendously positive remarks, and you're doing a brilliant job. But we have to be abundantly clear that we're not giving two different messages, especially when we're doing a voting at by the end of July, that's when we begin. Superintendent Davis?
Yes, ma'am, the chair. You know, through the recovery plan, you know, we say we're in the black, that's a positive. I mean, but openly, it's gonna be less than $2 million. When you look at the big scope and, of, of our work and look at our payroll, you know, on a monthly basis, it's, you know, what is it, $99 million? It's, it's significant. And, uh, so we've got to be able to be very clear. I agree with you about, you know, when we talk about being in a positive, it's only a handful of dollars related to what this district has to do and operate related to having 24,000-plus employees. So, you know, when you look at 24,000 employees, and you're trying to find, uh, proper incentives, you know, we, we have to build that operational, um, of funding up, and it's gonna take time to do so. And the millage is gonna allow us to, to be able to, um, create some time and space to be able to do that systemically. So it's automatic when we come to the table to be able to show value that is there, and we know it's there, because we build that reserve to be positive every year.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Vaughn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I appreciate that conversation, Member Gray, because one of the things that I wanted to point out is, as we are going over this and we're having the conversation, one of the reason that we're in the black is because, and I could be wrong on the figure, but close to $60 million is what we recoup from unfilled vacancies of things we're trying to fill. So, we're in the black because we can't get the people who we need in our schools to fill the positions that we're hopeful for, that with recruiting and, you know, we're able to get the people in our schools. So we have that money right now because there's a crisis in vacancies. If we were fully staffed, we wouldn't be in the black, because that $60 million comes from that. So I think that's an important piece of the conversation to have, is that we, we're able to recoup that money because of so many vacancies that we have right now. How many vacancies do we have looking, going into the next year right now that we haven't been able to fill, Superintendent Davis?
You know, we started out, I think it's, uh, currently right now, instructionally, it's around 700 vacancies. And we look at, uh, non-instructional vacancies, and I think, and Marie's not here, Dr. Wayland, I think it's around 500. So, we have a number of vacancies that we have to continue to fill, and we're doing everything we can to get individuals cycle through here. We're going to, uh, you know, every event offerings that we can to be able to, uh, attract new leaders, new teachers to this district.
Thank you. Um, the other thing that I wanted to ask about was actually on the, the budget amendments themselves. Um, and Ms. Garcia, you knew I was gonna ask this, and I know you sent me some information regarding it, but I want to get some clarity. Um, we had lost 3 million in Medicaid funding from the proposed budget, and we're mending that on this budget amendment. Um, can you help me understand why there's such a loss there?
So, um, last year, we received 1.5 million. Those actually for the previous years. We're not gonna receive those amounts this year. And we also have less, um, reimbursable billable activities this year than we've had in the past. So in the future, and we've been doing it so far, but they're gonna be training, uh, the, the, on filling out the random moment sample and properly filling it out. And we're also gonna be training the principals to show them how important it is to follow up with this.
So when you're saying we're not getting 1.5 from last year, why is that?
Because that in 2019 and 2020, um, ACA had a change, and so they did not give us all of our, all of our dollars. They reduced our claims. However, they had another change in 2021, and they caught up what they did not give us the previous years. We don't have that coming this year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To, um, Member Vaughn's point, um, it was the, the, the money from the employees, but was it also, um, that they scrubbed some of the, um, items on, on our books and were able to save this district some money?
Yes, ma'am, the chair. We, we did, we put a lot of, um, uh, you know, strategies in place related to, you know, looking at staff allocations, but also looking at district allocation, being able to look at energy efficiency with routing buses, but being able to look at contracts and arena- efficiency with routing buses, but being able to look at contracts and renegotiating contracts, to be able to, you know, eliminate funding for contracts, selectively abandon those contracts. And at the same token, just a number of, you know, getting rid of a number of, I would just say duplicated services or duplicated supplemental materials. It just didn't make sense. So, or duplicated positions at the district level. So we've done that in the last two and a half years to kind of put us back in balance. So we're continuing to work and put organizational controls in place to make certain that every dollar and every cent is valued, and it's linked to our strategic plan moving forward and based on our priorities. But also protects the integrity of class size, school, school improvement needs in our schools related to equity. And the same token, being able to focus on programmatic needs.
So really shoring up the fiscal responsibility that we're supposed to have here in this district.
Yes, ma'am. I have to say this, in the last two, two and a half years, this board has created the greatest accountability for funding and holding me and the staff accountable for making certain that we are being fiscal responsible.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Perez. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. 608, cost and fees for supplies, both school board expenses and student expenses for 2022, 2023 academic year. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am, the chair. This is an opportunity to bring to the board annually what school board expenses we pay for, and also for what student expenses we'll pay for for the academic year. This just gives transparency to what the school board is paying for related to any type of courses where we are offering for supplies and equipment. Also, this identifies any additional charges for any kind of books or kits for a class that has to be added for personal property that students may add, whether they, when they go to a particular class, and also any type of rentals, whether it be a locker rental, those types of things that, so we're transparent. And the last one, any service charge, any charge that's paid by the student that's based on dues and being a part of that process. So this is just bringing the transparency part of it. We know that our budget does not get finally approved in September. So just bringing this to the board at this time just gives the go-ahead and acknowledgement that we have to move forward from the start of the year to approve these expenditures. And this has been done, I think, since 1970.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second to approve item C 608. I have a motion by member Washington. I have a second by member Gray. Member Snively, member Gray, you pulled this item. Do you have any questions or comments? Member Snively, would you like to begin? Okay. Member Gray? Oh, is she, is she on? Okay, member Snively, we're on 608.
I'm sorry, I had to step away for just a moment, so I just need to catch up. Someone wants to go first.
Okay, member Gray, and then member Snively, you'll be next on item 608.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a peripheral question. I just was curious, and I see Chris Jargo in the audience, but Superintendent Davis, with the CTA, and there is a bit of an increase of the CTA programs, the money spent, but have we found the instructors to match these teaching, I mean, these courses? We're talking Barber, Barber one, Barber two, Barber three. Have we, do we have faculty in place?
Through the chair, yes, ma'am. We're, you know, it's always fluent. So, yes, ma'am, we're making certain there's continuity with these programs. So any of these new CTE pathways that we offer, we usually historically have someone on site ready to go to be able to implement that. And so if a student's taking Barber one, we want that student, you know, this year or for next year to be able to take in Barber two, and the following year, Barber three. So we do have staff systemically we may have to add, and as you know, people leave and resign. But ultimately, we have a foundation for all these elements to be able to have a continuity within our district. And the reason you see adds, because these are just new innovative solutions that we're bringing, because this is based on the needs that our, that our kids are wanting to do to participate in the workforce.
Yeah, and I applaud it. I think it's exciting. It's just always the, the other reality is finding the instructor to do all that. But, but we'll wish everyone good success on that. Thank you, Mr. Jargo, also for your outstanding work. All right, I'm done.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one I pulled just for a little bit of transparency, because I've never seen an agenda item quite like this one that came, comes forward with regards to school board expense and student expense. So it kind of combined several categories into one. And so I asked that it just be kind of highlighted and discussed at the board meeting so we could just be more, get some more clarity around it. As member Gray mentioned, we do appreciate all the work of our CTE leadership in the school district, that you are certainly making a difference in our, our district. And so that's really the reason I pulled that one, just because it was unique compared to previously presented items. Thank you.
Thank you, member Snively. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. 612, statement of work for IBI Solutions for Analytics and Data Warehouse Development and Support. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am. This is a relationship that the districts had since 2014 with IBI Solutions. And what they do is really help us secure experts as needed, you know, expert of IT engineers, really help us, whether it's looking at extracting, transforming, or loading any software or data sets to our school district. This will be the last year of extending this contract because we are, as you know, we are going to transition to Synergy, which starts in the fall of 2023, and will no longer need all of that integration information to be able to transition, want to get it done in this particular year. So the reason this is on the discussion, because it is $67,000 of the general fund.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second to approve item 612. I have a motion by member Washington, and I have a second by member Vaughn. Any discussion? Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously with member Gray, not on the dais. Next item is 613, agreement 22145 SSD LG Bulk Student Schedule. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am, the chair. This is another one-year gap fill for us as we continue to use focus for our software to be able to schedule students, particularly within our school district. As you know, Synergy will be able to pick up a lot of this information the following year, fall '22. But we need just to be able to make sure we're accurately scheduling our students and having all the database we need to make certain that students are following the core sequences they need for academic histories. So this is a on because it's $116,000 of general fund to be able to fill this gap for the final year.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second to approve item C 613. I have a motion by member Vaughn, and I have a second by member Perez. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously with member Gray, not on the dais. Item C, I mean, item C 614, piggyback 22130 PGBLG ESE White Fleet Vehicle Purchase. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am, the chair. This is an opportunity for us to spend some internal money on white fleet to better serve our students with disabilities. Right now, we currently have a contract with AC, with ALC, which is around $3.5 million that really transports students who have immediate needs to and from schools in particular locations. What this does is allows us to go out and purchase a number of passenger vans to be able to transport students, and those vans will be specially designed to be able to assist students with disabilities. Openly down the road, as we, as we make this initial purchase, we'll be able to save roughly, you know, over, you know, $1 million annually, as we'll be able to use our own white fleet and hire our own employees to be able to, to move individuals from one location to the next in a safe manner. So just bringing this to the board as a, as FYI, and this is driven by our immediate needs, and this is funding that will be used for the American Recovery Plan Individual with Disabilities. So this is IDA funding.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second to approve item C 614. I have a motion by member Washington, and I have a second by member Perez. Member Snively, member Gray, you pulled this item. Do you have any questions or comments? Member Snively?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So I just wanted to say, similar to a conversation I had with the superintendent about this, this is a bit on the innovative side. ALC is a great vendor for us. However, it is very expensive. And so we've had this discussion with, with Mr. Farkas and Mr. Beekman in previous Transportation Committee meetings, when we used to have a Transportation Committee. And we talked about doing something like this. This is a little bit different, a little bit innovative, and the main thing is that we can provide equal to or better than services that we have provided in the past and save several thousands, thousands and thousands of dollars for the school district. So, so really, I'm just thankful that we're doing something like this. I'm not crazy about the fact that we're purchasing a fleet at probably the height of the, the seller market when it comes to vehicles right now. But I am, I am pleased that we are saving transportation funds by doing this for the school district. So, so thank you.
Thank you, member Snively. Member Gray?
Yes, and thank you, member Snively, for reminding us that this is an all-time high to buy vehicles, because I just bought one, by the way. But at any rate, it does represent a cost savings. But more than anything, the drivers actually are, they're paraprofessionals in charge of their students. So it's really, I think, a win-win situation, especially for our students. And, but the cost savings, how much estimated, Superintendent Davis, are we saving? I know we're using the ARC money. Is that, you better correct me, because I have it written.
Yeah, we will be using IDA funding.
IDA, okay.
Yes, ma'am, and then we will potentially save around 1.2 million.
1.2, okay. So this is a great, very, again, innovation, innovative thinking, and very good for our students. I thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, member Gray. Please vote when your lights appear. Okay, and we're just waiting just one moment. And it passes unanimously. 615, piggyback 20203 PGBLGE Rate Support Services. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am, the chair. Our district utilizes E-Rate from a federal communications commission to be able to identify and draw down funds to help us with internal connectivity, and at the same token, being able to help us with our, our local wireless switches. So what this does is allow us to, to hire an E-Rate consultant, which they really help us go through all the E-Rate federal guidelines and make sure that we are meeting those guidelines. What they do is they help us file our E-Rate claims. And as you know, E-Rate claims, any money that we spend on our internet access or WAN, that they, we get 80% back in refunds. What they do is just make certain we're in compliance, and we are able to be reimbursed last year for over, you know, close to a million dollars. And we, as we continue to grow, we'll continue to make certain that's a reality. The reason this has been pulled, because this is a 187,000, sorry, $87,000 spend in general funds.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second to approve item C 615. I have a motion by member Washington, and I have a second by member Gray. Any discussion? Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. 617, mental health plan for the use of mental health assistance. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am. You know, annually, we are required to bring our mental health plan to the board for approval and review, and at the same token, being able to ask for approval, submit it to the Department of Education. In this, what it does is allow us to identify all the contracted services that we have for implementation, allows us to identify every dollar and every cent that we implement related to our mental health plan. We continue to expand our initiatives for not only implementing the work, for adding outside agencies to come help us, being able to serve our children and also our families, but also being able to put support staffs within our schools and continue to make sure we support and protect social workers, psychologists, counselors, climate and culture leads, and you name it, to be able to make certain that we show up every day for our children. So this is a indication of what we're doing, not only from a personnel perspective, but how we are committed to make certain that ongoing professional development and training is in the forefront, related to youth mental health first aid, at the same token, looking, making certain that we train for trauma-informed schools. And we have that inclusive approach every day for, for our children, using analytical survey data to inform our work, and also make certain that we have clinicians available at our, you know, over 100 sites, who have deemed and identified additional supports needed through mental health referrals, or also discipline data and triangulate and other metrics to be able to be consistent in our effort. I'm going to transition to Mrs. Baze, who can give an update, and her team's here, who's done a fabulous job. We thank you so very much for the workshop last week, but also what you continue to do to make sure we expand mental health services. Ms. Baze?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And through the chair, yeah, thank you for bringing this up for attention and discussion. And the team is here if you have specific questions. But one additional point that I'd like to highlight is that of the slightly over $10 million that we'll be receiving, and taking away the 1.5 roughly that's going to the charter schools, the bulk of this will be used for people, for face-to-face guidance and face-to-face support with our children, because we're still realizing and recognizing the effects of our students having been COVID-affected, and in the situations that they've been dealing with at home, they need the face-to-face guidance, they need to have the supports. And so the bulk of these dollars will be spent just in face-to-face support for our students.
And thank you, Ms. Baze. One thing I want to clarify, that we had someone speak tonight and talked about cutting services. We have not cut school counselors, we have not cut any type of social workers or psychologists. We're trying to expand as much as we, as we can. The issue is, is as we expand, just trying to be able to fill those positions with highly qualified certified personnel.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second to approve item C 617. I have a motion by member Perez, and I have a second by member Snively. Member Snively, member Gray, you both pulled this item. Member Snively, we'll begin with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you again for the workshop. I think that was last week, but it feels like my weeks go by faster and faster these days. But I just want to say thank you for the, all of the work that our district does around mental health. It's not perfect, we know that. There are challenges, we understand that. But more than ever, our students need us, and they need us to be there to support them, and we need to provide the resources and the professional resources that are available to support our students. And so I just wanted to say thank you briefly for all of the work the district has done. We've evolved quite a bit since 2019 in this, in this space. And again, like I said, it's not perfect, but we are really getting better and better at how we're providing our services for students. And so thank you, Ms. Baze, and thank you to the team who consistently works diligently every day to try and help our students in this space. Thank you.
Thank you, member Snively. Member Gray?
Ditto. And Ms. Baze, I never did thank you personally, and I know the board joins me in saying you did a great job, comprehensive job. And, and Michael Kellner, and Elizabeth, Elizabeth, not yet, Elizabeth Hannah. You know, the direct mental health supports, as you well know, are critical for our kids. And I say direct, the guidance counselor, you know, in the olden days, we had a guidance counselor that we all knew the name, and we could go and exchange the day-to-day challenges. We've gone a long way, and I know Kristin Davis, we're going to put that on our legislative priority once again, to change that ratio to be lower, because without our counselors and our vocational counselors, our children, you know, they can go in so many different negative directions. So I just want to thank you. We're going to miss you as well. You have been a great advocate for so many divisions, and mental health certainly has been one of them. They appreciate you too, I know that for sure. So you want to say anything, Kim?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you.
Thank you, member Gray. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when I first came here, removing the stigma... Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when I first came here, removing the stigma of speaking about mental health was one of the biggest challenges. And to date, you know, when I speak to students, when I go to schools, they talk to me about how Hillsborough County has truly removed that stigma for them. They feel surrounded, supported, and embraced when it comes to them being able to approach anyone, just anyone on our campus, let alone know that they have those supports, the social workers, the counselors, and the psychologists. And they know that they could go and talk to them. They feel, you know, that connection. And, you know, they know that they can say, hey, do you have a minute? And they will be, you know, provided that time to be able to speak what's on their mind. So I appreciate what Hillsborough County schools have done to support their students and also the families, because the families, once a student feels supported, the family is also at ease and feels that support as well. So thank you for, the whole team, for what you have done. And thank you, Superintendent, for clarifying, you know, because I was like, you fired who? You know, especially when we need the support. So thank you so much for clarifying that and putting our community at ease and knowing we have those supports here, and we continue to hire those supports.
Thank you, Member Perez. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. 619 Increase in Expenditures for Kelly Services Incorporated. Invitation to Negotiate. 19213 DST4 Substitute and Exchange Program Teaching Services. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is an opportunity for us to really help our teachers and our leaders in our schools. You know, one thing we identified is that we, over the last couple of years, we've really struggled to be able to fill sub vacancies in our schools. And, you know, with our teachers being out related to any type of illnesses or being with their families or COVID, you know, we've got to make certain that we have sufficient coverage for their classes. And in this, we're asking the board to move and increase the compensation for subs. For example, for GED, moving from $11 an hour to $13.91, and also for a certified teacher from $16.85 to $21.31. And this is overall an increase of $1.8 million. But it's a necessity for us to be able to compete with surrounding counties and to get individuals to be more attractive, to help us fill the needs of our, with our school within our community.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion, a second to approve item C 619. I have a motion by Member Washington, and I have a second by Member Gray. Member Gray, you pulled this item. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. I had a question, and thank you, Dr. Marie Whalen, for putting the answer right in front of me, regarding the Kelly Services substitute. We know that, you know, we do have an upcoming school safety meeting. But a question was asked, few of them, that how are the subs prepared for the safety protocols that are necessary these days? Would you go ahead and just, if that's okay, Superintendent Davis, Marie?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So in part of the training and the professional development for our substitutes related to student and personal safety, they do review handling of emergencies, and that includes physical and verbal disagreement between students, threatening behavior from a student, student with a weapon, student with drugs, or threatening behavior from an adult. So that is a part of the training of our substitutes as well.
Okay. Do you feel confident, Dr. Whalen, that this is very comprehensive training for our subs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All righty. Well, that's what I wanted to clear up, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Vaughn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make sure that I'm looking at the right agenda item. This is the one that we've met about in regards to raising subpay, or this is about something else?
Subpay.
Subpay, okay. I just want to make sure. Sorry. Mr. Porter was talking to me in the middle of this.
I was responding to a question from the board.
I just want, I had some questions about this, because, you know, I was a substitute teacher for six years. I understand the value of substitute teachers, especially now when we have so many vacancies, you know, and it was really hard to live on the pay that I got as a substitute teacher. And oftentimes, you know, you're doing a similar workload. My question is, and I'm all for raising subs pay, this is a reoccurring expense that we're committing to when we raise this annually, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, I just wanted to make a point that I support this. But given the agenda items that we're talking about tonight, when we're talking about salaries, I just hope that we have the same conversation at the forefront when we talk about teachers and staff salaries going forward. I just want to make that point, because we often talk about reoccurring expenses, and this is a reoccurring expense that we're committing to, because we see the value in raising the pay of our substitute teachers, so we can attract them, because they also equate to student success. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. 620 Increase in Expenditures for Agreement 19097 XMT01 Legal Services for Exceptional Student Education Services. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am. This is an approval to increase our expenditures for legal services with Fisher &amp; Phillips LLP. We have an awesome relationship with Lakeisha, who's been with this school district for 15 years. She's done a really remarkable job helping us with due processes or IP meetings. You know, we see that we have more volume, more meetings that are in person. So she's really helping us continue to strengthen our work with our ESE department. So just bringing this for transparency, and there's definitely a need.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion, a second to approve item C 610. I have a motion by Member Washington, and I have a second by Member Perez. Any discussion? Please vote when your lights appear. Oh, Member Vaughn?
Thank you. What is the reason for the jump in the year from 317 to 345? Are we anticipating a larger caseload, or is that just inflation? I just want to know the reason for the substantial jump.
So if you look at 2021, it was $373,000. And if you look at 2122, you know, it was 317. So we're having more meetings related to in-person as we transition to the summer, more students potentially staffed. So we see that increase, and we're just being able to plan for that increase in volume. And I'll let Dr. Monica Vera-Torado to be able...
Absolutely. It's anticipated that, just to cover additional litigation expenses should they occur, so that we're prepared for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. 621 Piggyback 22120 PGB4 Print Goods and Services. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is a district contract that we continue to have when we lease all of our devices for copying machines at our school sites and the district sites. This has been a relationship for the last 15-plus years. So bringing this back to the school district related to making certain we address our needs, and this is inclusive of not only our devices and our equipment, but also all of our supplies and our toners. And if we were able to separate those and separate the devices, at least, and also the toner supplies, you would spend more money on the toner supplies. So this is an all-inclusive approach to be able to make certain that we save money at scale by lumping this together and bringing this to board for approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion, a second to approve item C 621. I have a motion by Member Gray, and I have a second by Member Washington. Any questions or comments? Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. 622 Legal Service Agreements 22113 XMTIV for Disclosure Counsel Service. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am. This is an opportunity for us to go out and identify Disclosure Counsel Service. This is where they are, we are informed, we disseminate information about our bond issues, and that is information is disseminated to the marketplace. We don't anticipate having to use this, but bringing it to the board just in case as we start having to build, you know, 18 schools in the next 15 years. We may need additional funding, so being able to have this counsel readily available may help us. They work with our team to be able to look at any potential claims and also review any type of strategy for debt services and provide a legal analysis. One thing that was questioned was, can Ford Associates do that? Excuse me, Ford Associates is different. Ford Associate, on their end, their role and responsibilities, provide recommendations for marketing bonds, also pledge of revenues, and look at our flow of funding. They analyze our financial status and our portfolio to figure out how we can strengthen it. And their job is to be a liaison to the bond counselors. And the bond counselors just look at that forecastability for the marketplace. So there's really two different entities, and I hope from a legal perspective, Mr. Gibson and Mr. Porter, I explained that properly.
In addition, Ford Associates are not attorneys, and this is, an attorney is required for this. They're financial advisors. So we have to have bond counsel and disclosure counsel, and that's why we're doing this.
That's an important part.
Thank you. I need a motion, a second to approve item C 622. I have a motion by Member Perez, and I have a second by Member Washington. Member Snively and Member Gray, you pulled this item. Do you have any questions or comments? Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for answering the question about Ford and Associates, since this is bond-related. Is this, I don't recall having an agreement like this before. So I'm guessing this is a situation where we are just having the counsel on...
Retainer.
What's the word? Thank you, retainer. Are we just having a counsel on retainer at this point? Have we ever had to do this before?
This is submitted to the board. Every year, we always have the bond counsel on retainer, just in case we have to use them for new construction, go after bonding for the district.
Yeah, every local government in Florida has both bond counsel and disclosure counsel. And this is something that is very common. It's required. I can't be Mr. Gibson or myself. It has to be different firms. And we've had a long-term relationship with both our bond counsel and disclosure counsel. But it's something that's required. And again, Ford and Associates aren't attorneys. They perform a different function. So this is a very...
Understood.
Part of it in general. Yeah, got it.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. And I see our financial impact. Well, the last financial impact that I can see is from 2019 to 2020, which was $73,277. But it didn't look like we had to engage them for 2020 or 2021, or maybe even 2022. So that answered my question about being on, this is really just a retainer situation?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Member Gray?
Yeah, and Member Snively, indeed, I don't remember seeing this either, so I pulled it as well. So enough said. It's been explained, and it's a retainer, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. The final item is 1001, approved the 2022-2023 Student Code and Conduct. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am. This is an annual update review to bring to the board for approval, so we can start messaging this to our community about our code of student conduct. I know that last year, we had a workshop to be able to talk about all of the major changes that we implemented for the 2122 school year. This year, there wasn't a lot of significant changes that were made. This was a lot of grammatical updates, a lot of definitions, a lot of restorative practice being implemented within our code of conduct, and also being able to address our dress code within our school district. This is an annual creation of, when I got here, I wanted to make certain that we had a holistic viewpoint of all of our stakeholders. So we've had principals at elementary, middle, and high school, teachers from every grade band. We had students actively involved, civic leaders, PTAs, CTA, you name it. We've had individuals from student engagement, district staff, all-inclusive, to be able to identify what's working, what's not, and what we can do differently in the code of conduct. As you know, you know, this past year was so trying related to the behaviors that we experienced, more than ever. And it wasn't only just, you know, for Hillsborough County, but throughout this state and throughout this nation, that we deal with many disciplines, because so many of our students were not into our schools close to two years. So had to reenact and re-coach and focus on positive behavior support. So bringing this to board with minimal changes. I'm going to transition to Ms. Baze and see if she wants to update, provide any additional update that I may have left out provided this particular item.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Davis. Just to highlight a couple, we really have made an emphasis on putting restorative practices and a lot of different restorative structures back into place for the students and for the teachers as well, so that the teachers are going to have some strategies and how to cope with these behaviors, and so that we can turn the students around and get them to take ownership for themselves and really make more positive decisions. We're also going to have three restorative practice centers set up this year, starting off at Brandon Success Center, North Tampa, and at Chamberlain. So those are going to be role models for the rest of the schools. Additionally, which you may or may not be aware of, the ACLU reached out to every district in the state of Florida this year and required us to review the dress code and required us to remove anything that was gender-specific or culturally harmful. So we did that as well. Before we even had this first review committee, we had a committee just to review the dress code itself and cell phone usage along with that. And then that team transitioned right into the entire code of conduct team. So those revisions were built in as well.
Thank you, Ms. Baze. I need a motion and a second to approve item C 1001. I have a motion by Member Vaughn, and I have a second by Member Washington. Member Snively, Member Vaughn, Member Gray, pull this item. Do you have any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and begin with Member Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm glad that you answered that, because I did have some questions about the red line piece when it came to the dress code. I'm glad to see that we've, you know, we've leaned into the ACLU to make sure that, you know, there's nothing specific to any gender in it. But I do have questions about, on page 51, under dress code, something that's been added are, you know, clothing and accessories that display suggest sexual, vulgar, drug, gang, weapons, or alcohol, tobacco, or vaping-related wording or graphics, or provoke violence, or disruption in the school shall be worn. Oh, shut up. Shall not be worn. Sorry. That's the key word there. But my question is, you know, with that word of disruption, that's so subjective, especially kind of in the environment that we're in now. I mean, you could see the conversation that we've had about, you know, syrup on a bottle, where that can go to. So, you know, who's gauging, and what does that look like? Because, you know, you could have an opposing sports team, and that could cause disruption. So, you know, how are we making sure the people who are gauging what's disruptive and appropriate, you know, are not biased, or how are we gauging that, is my question?
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. It's an excellent question. As we broke out into teams, we did this by grade band, because one of the things that we realized is that the behaviors and what constitutes disruption differs drastically by grade level. So what our elementary principals and parents and even students said was, what we want to do and what constitutes disruption at an elementary level is far different from what might happen on a large campus at a high school level. That's going to take it down to the discretion of the principals, discretion of the culture in the school buildings. And that really was a unanimous decision by everybody on the team, that we've got to have a little bit of flexibility, so that if we have somebody who is going to be determining what a disruption is in a kindergarten classroom, they can make that judgment at the elementary level. And it may be far different from the judgment that somebody at a 2,000-campus-sized campus in high school does. So they really wanted to leave that discretion up to the culture and to the leadership at each school.
So if, let's say, in middle school, somebody's wearing a shirt that says inclusivity, and, you know, there's many different religious signs on that, and somebody complains and thinks that's disruptive, it will be left up to the principal to decide whether that's a dress code violation and ask that student to change their clothing? Is that one of the things that we've added in the red-line version of the options for dress code violation?
Yes, and it will be up to the leadership team. And what we've also done in the consequences is to offer them a little bit more flexibility. So one of the things that we are not doing anymore for the dress code is sending students home. We're going to offer clothing available to them. We're not going to send students home because they're not dressed appropriately. So yes, this will be a leadership team decision at the school level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been a minute since we had our workshop on the code of conduct. And so I think that in the future, if you... And so I think that in the future, if you had the workshop a little bit closer to the proposal of any code changes, I think that would be helpful. That's just a suggestion, you know, appreciate all the work that you do. This is probably one of the most challenging documents that we have because there is so much to interpretation of some of the code of conduct, as Member Vaughn alluded to. And I think it's always good to hear a refresher from perhaps the superintendent or Ms. Bays on how we communicate this with students and how we communicate this with parents and guardians. Because we understand that parents, especially parents and guardians are given a lot of material during the first couple of weeks when school begins and it's a little bit overwhelming. And so I don't know how many parents actually read the entire code of conduct from front to back because it is challenging and a little overwhelming. So I'd like to hear a little bit about what strategies are being used to communicate this with students and communicate this with parents so that we can all be on the same team with regard to abiding by these codes in the code of conduct.
Certainly. So our recommendation, which we will be sharing at the Leadership Institute this summer, is that the principals and the assistant principals really highlight the changes. Not that they are going to emphasize going through every single line of the code of conduct, but to highlight and emphasize the changes. Again, those being primarily that we are putting in some restorative practices as alternatives and consequences. We want to be more proactive than reactive. So we want our parents to know and our students to know that we're going to be building in strategies to help the right decisions to be made by the students. We're also going to communicate that with the parents, that we're going to have more flexibility in the consequences. We don't want to send children home. We don't want to send them off campus. We want to keep them in school. So a lot of our changes right now are geared toward making positive decisions and then keeping our students in school and bringing them back to us. We'll also be recommending that they do share the code of, or the, excuse me, the dress code changes that we've made so that they know that there are no gender specific items that are going to be referred to in the code of conduct. So to answer your question more succinctly, rather than going through every single line in the code of conduct, we're really going to be recommending that they highlight and focus on the changes because we feel they're very positive.
Thank you very much. I think the more that we can continue to communicate and reinforce the code of conduct, the better that our students and parents and guardians can understand it. And I don't think anybody intent, you know, goes completely against the code of conduct intending to break the code of conduct. I think a lot of times things are misunderstood or miscommunicated or undercommunicated. And that's what leads, you know, students into those situations where they may, you know, break a rule in the code of conduct and have to feel that consequence when maybe it wasn't necessary if there's a better understanding of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Snively. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bays, also, when we talk about communication, and this has been one of the sore spots with this code of conduct, it just, it's such a huge document in terms of bandwidth for computers, you know, you can't fit it on a phone. You can't, you got to really have a lot of width, and that's not the right word, but a lot of space in your computer. Let me ask you this, are we making adaptations for the Hispanic population for them to also receive this and the reminders in Spanish?
Yes, absolutely. This will be translated and be available in Spanish. And we'll also be able to do that, do the trainings for the teachers as we need to and the students in Spanish as well.
Okay, and the question I had was when we look at the nation and we look at discipline, not only in our district, but in throughout the nation, there's so much anger among our students, frustration, anxiety, and a lot of these students are taking it out on their teachers to a point where there are many schools that a teacher has been physically accosted, and I'm trying to put in the right words. So the question I have, and I know Joshua Crystal, wherever you are, you're doing a great job, the change of environment, the principals are sharing that there's just, they have so many of the children, students, that are having these bad decisions, making these bad decisions of a physical sense, you know, there's a certain amount of danger. What are we, what are we planning to do to accommodate? We used to call it change of replacement, COPs. Now we call it change of environment, and I think that was your description. And it's a very nice word, but the idea is the student is definitely, many of them are out of hand. So what are we going, it's understaffed, we know that. I just want to hear what we're doing, what we will be doing about that.
Certainly. One of the things that we've done right off, out of the gate is that we've realized because of the extraordinary number of students who had to have a change of environment and just take a break from where they were, is that we have been able to increase the number of teachers that we're going to have at our success centers. So we have added four more teachers for each of the North Tampa sites and Brandon Success Center already. Additionally, we have made sure that they have full-time social worker, full-time psychologist and counselors at these sites as well. The goal that we want to do here is to return our students back into a setting where they feel most comfortable. Some of our students have chosen to remain at these smaller sites. And when they choose to do that and they want to be at a smaller site where there may be 100 students instead of 1,000 students, then we encourage that and we let them do that. For those who want to return, as I mentioned earlier, what we're doing is building restorative practice centers at both Brandon Success Center and North Tampa so that these students and these teachers who have been experiencing these extreme behaviors will now have some real strategies brought to them every single day to help them not only in their day-to-day where they're, when they're at the centers, but also to transition back into their home sites. We've got to be able to help them where they are. And some of them are coming to us with these behaviors because of what's going on in their own home environments and their own neighborhoods. So we've got to use our time wisely when we have them and really do some proactive work with them at these centers. So that's why we're going to be creating these model programs for the students and for the teachers as well. That training has already begun for these teachers.
And just as a statistic, and I'm reminded of Eisenhower, Johann was the principal, we had in the easy 20 to 25 COPs, change of placements per year. And then when we instituted PBIS, it went down to four or five. And State Attorney Andrew Warren, we went and marveled at the different type of culture, which is really what Jake Russell of Chamberlain has done as well. So I mean, I truly believe it can be done, but more needs to, we have more of this anger since then and it's gone over the top. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you for the comprehensive answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Washington, then I'll go after you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question, Mr. Davis, about, I received some information over the weekend about the suspensions of the black and brown kids. Do we have, is there any possible way the board could have numbers on the suspension rate?
To the Chair, absolutely. We did see an uptick in suspensions this year related to where we are as a district. But I think this is through having conversations related to other superintendents in the state of Florida, they experienced the same thing with a number of students acting out. So I can send that information to you. I want to be very clear that this is going to be, you know, a baseline year related to, you know, where we are and how we identify improvements moving forward. The celebration is, is that, you know, we, if you look at our, where we were from an arrest perspective this year versus where we were from 2018, 2019, which had 907 arrests, this year we're at 467 arrests, meaning we're doing a better job keeping students out of law enforcement's hands and into our systems. And openly, you know, we, suspension is our last resort. The problem is when behaviors are systemically, you know, demonstrated or undesired at a systemic scale, we have to be able to create space between us and the learner and then figure out when they come back how we can help them make an informed decisions. And at the same time, we have less students from now, you know, if you look at 2014, 2015, the number of students that were the W26 withdrawal code, meaning that we were pushing them out to adult education, they weren't getting a high school diploma. You know, 2014, 2015, there were like 1,700 of those students with a code, withdrawal code of W26. This year, we closed it out with 877. So there's a lot of comparisons that we've done some really good things, but we know that we've really got to address where we are from a suspension perspective. And if we go back to 2018, 2019, I'll send this data this evening or first thing in the morning, 2018, 2019, we had around 23,800 out-of-school suspensions. If we look where we are now in this year, I think it's around, you know, 25, 26,000 suspensions. You know, that's a, that's a long time of, you know, of complexities that have been compressed in during the pandemic that we're not really far off where we were, you know, a couple of years ago prior, you know, to the pandemic. But we still have work to do for positive behavior supports, informed, you know, trauma-informed schools and really getting students accustomed back to making the right decisions. And openly, we have to concentrate on students with color because it really, you know, it matters for us to make certain that we're helping them break cycles of, you know, undesired behaviors and getting them to a point where they remain in schools every day that we can.
I would like, yes, I would like for us to have a report on that because, because I want to make sure that when people are out there talking about suspensions, we have the correct numbers.
Yes, sir.
Because there's sometimes those numbers are overflated, sometimes how they say the students are suspended from school. So if you would give that to us, I would appreciate it.
And you're going to see in the multi-year comparison, there is a school year that the school district dropped significantly. And this was because there was a stance that I have investigated, heard that, you know, suspensions weren't expected to be given out. For me, we're going to be transparent 100%. You know, we're going to take everything that we can and make certain that it's documented and that it's identified within our data because that gives us a true indication of where we are and what we have to focus on. So, and I'll point that out in our review. And I want to thank Dr. Han, she gave me this review document to be able to unpack analytics and our team's going to put something together to be able to disseminate so the board not only has data, but there's context related to that data so you know where we are, where we have to go and why we're facing the current situation that we're currently in.
That's good because we would need that. I don't want anyone thinking we are kicking kids out of school and not doing what we're supposed to do because that's the perception many a times when they look at numbers, so.
And I agree, sir. I mean, so many, you know, people, if you haven't been in a school district in the last two years, you just don't understand what has transpired in our classrooms, in our hallways, I mean, multiply that into our community, in our common areas. It's a different day. So, you know, we are, we don't pride ourselves on the numbers that we currently have, but we pride ourselves on being transparent of report and everything and working diligently to address it as we move into the following year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Member Washington. And just a couple of comments. I really want to thank you, Ms. Bays, for all your hard work and the entire team who work on so many factors of just not, not only this, the code of conduct, but also mental health. Because a lot of that really, you know, overlaps each other. And I think it's so important as we expand the PBIS room, PBIS and the trauma-based learning, and we're seeing that some of our schools that we're looking at trauma-based teaching and the increase of mental health. And hopefully, as we continue to focus on counselors, and I've talked about this a lot, how we really need to make sure that our counselors are available to be proactive and that they're not really in that position where they're, you know, basically overseeing tests and they're subbing. We really want to make sure our counselors are available. Overall, I was looking at this through Educational Weekly, like 73% of suburban schools are seeing huge rates of increase in violence in their schools as well as urban schools. I was looking at this last night, increase across the nation. And we saw that with TikTok challenges, you know, very inappropriate behavior. And it's not, you know, it's really a nationwide issue. The one thing, and I know we're never going to change cell phones, and I know that's a huge issue when we talk about profanity or inappropriate things, all of that is accessed through a phone. You walk into a school, I mean, I guess my biggest worry or concern is, you know, what does it look like in one school if kids have AirPods and they're in there and they're with the phones? A lot of times you're seeing students more and more disengaged from the classroom. And this is something not that we're going to solve today, but this is something that I'm concerned about really, long-term, what does that look like? And then the other part is the amount of institutional knowledge students are losing because the amount of cheating that's occurring with cell phones in schools and how that's impacting students, not only increasing violence by having fights so they can videotape it. And this is not, as I said, this is not just to Hillsborough County, it's across the nation. And how do we face that? And how do we look at that to make sure we decrease cellphone use, make sure that students are not getting in fights just to be filmed on something, that we see that students are less and less engaged in school and more and more engaged on their phones? So I just really, I know we're not going to solve this. I know we're not going to take the phones away, but let's really look at our high schools and let's really try to send a message with our principals to make sure we try to reduce the amount of time that students are on phone and they're more engaged into what's going on. I know several of my middle schools like Walker, during lunchtime, they don't have phones because kids can socialize. And that's really important for children for many, many reasons. But I just wanted to comment on that and maybe that's something that we can continue to look at, but that's something that concerns me as a board member and as just a parent. Member Vaughn?
Thank you, Chair Combs. My question kind of falls a bit in line with that, but a little bit on the other side of the coin because I absolutely agree, cell phones have become a problem. There are people who are setting up challenges to film them, to create disruption. People have, students have access to way more concerning things than what's in our libraries on their cellphone. I agree with that. But under our student code of conduct, under page 39, and I had a conversation with Superintendent Davis about this, it does address disobedience or insubordination, refusal or failure to obey marked by resistance or authority, the flagrant or hostile challenge of authority of a school staff member, bus driver, any other adult in authority. And it has an example, student refuses to put cellphone away when directed by school or staff member. Non-example, student was instructed to stop the undesired behavior, no posted rules. I just want to make sure that if there's a situation where there's some sort of abuse of some sort going on and a student films that, just because the teacher tells them to put them away, if the student feels that that needs to be filmed for evidence or in something in that case, that student's not going to be penalized. I mean, we're kind of seeing laws like that around the nation where if there, you know, people are filming police brutality, we're trying to squash that. And I just want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up to discipline a student or anyone else who's trying to capture something that should be captured in our schools.
No, that's a good point and it's a very fine line because while we don't want cell phones to be used for disruption, in many, many of the investigations that we have had to run this year, we have been able to determine exactly what happened because things were caught on film through cell phones. And so when that happens, we have conversations with the students and with the parents and we try to redirect them in saying, we really don't want you using your cell phones. However, thank you for doing this in a way that you immediately turned it over to administration and said, here's something that I think you should see and to share it that way. So you're right, we don't want to penalize the students who are using the cell phones in order to capture something and share it with the authorities.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Combs. So here I come again with some data. Member Washington. So I do have the out-of-school suspension information. So overall, the grand total for the 2021-22 school year, it was 26,287 students suspended out of school. And the reason why I bring this data to the table and disciplined was 18,287. But that, that number is only for the black and Hispanic students. Out-of-school suspended was between black and Hispanic students were 20,018 students. So the reason why I'm bringing this data to the table, well, let me, let me bring one more number. And that was, that's 4,513 students in 2021, 2022 that are homeless. So I'm going to go to page 32 here in the dress code. And I'm also going to remind my fellow board members that we have a lot of students who are being bused across this district to go to school. If, and it says incident number one, change of clothes. Incident number two, five to one days ineligible to participate in any extracurricular activities if they don't have the clothing that they need or require. And then incident number three, they get, they have to change their clothes and they get one to three, three days out-of-school suspension. And then the next one was, I believe it was on page 52. Hold on a second, dress code. Yeah, 51, page 51. On page 51, it says that, that the clothing shall be worn securely fastened to the feet and then during physical. physical education classes, shoes must be suitable for outdoor, um, wear. Now, let me ask this question. Given the fact that we are living in the time that we're living in, and we have that number of students that are homeless, 4,513 students to total, and we don't know how many for next year, what, how do we address this issue?
Yes, ma'am, the chair. Any, any student that, that comes to us from a dress code perspective that has a systemic problem or temporary problem related to not having the essentials, we're going to help that student out. That student in no way, shape or form will ever be penalized related to the code of conduct, related to discipline, even though the code of conduct may say there's a progressive discipline for that learner to, for the school to be able to follow. The good thing is that our teachers and our, and our administrators, they know our children. They, they gain access to them every day. They, um, and they will not only work with them to identify their needs, but being able to support wraparound services to help them be successful. So if we have a learner that doesn't have the, the proper equipment in a class to compete, whether it's notebook, paper, pencils, calculators, you name it, or you, you know, proper utensils in a culinary, we're going to make sure we have that provide, that, that provision is going to be provided. So, um, in this process, if we have someone just, that's just belligerently being disobedient, they don't care, they come to physical education, they don't have their change of clothes, they're going to wear flip flops every day knowing that they got to play volleyball. As a school district, we have to protect ourselves from safety and security measures. And, you know, we're, in here, you'll see, we're going to coach the student, conference with the student, make certain that we contact the, the student's parents. All those are progressions that we'll take. But if it comes to blatant defiance, we've got to have some type of teeth to protect the organization and also to protect the integrity of the class as well. So, but anybody that has essential needs, we're going to work diligently to make certain that those needs are, are filled. Ms. Baze, anything?
I'd just like to add to that and say that Josh Crystal's team and Holly Sayah's team have done a beautiful job this year of working together so that when students come to the table and they have made some bad decisions and bad choices, we bring our student services team to the table, not only to talk and work with the student, but to work with the family as well. So we're really trying to engage and support them that way as well.
Yeah, because I noticed it just says that, um, the student code is a condition for preparation in extracurricular activities. It doesn't give a leeway just in case.
No, ma'am, it will not. We'll be very clear about that, about that process and the supports we need for, for children. And if we get to a point where, you know, there's a mistake that's made, we'll rectify it, we'll address it and make certain that the family and that student feels comfortable and, and that they're acknowledged. And if there's a particular, you know, void, we will fill that void. We have standby partners ready to go to be able to help and assist.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. Actually, I am so glad you brought that up, Member Perez. I don't know why I couldn't find it, but I was really concerned when we looked at that about on, um, page 32 under dress code, as you mentioned, the ongoing responses to that, um, the one to five days being ineligible, ineligible to participate in any extracurricular activities on day one through five. I don't think we should be taking extracurricular activities away from kids as a violation of dress code. So I actually, I'd like to make a motion to strike that from the student code of conduct.
You need a second, and then you can have a discussion.
Member Perez is seconding it?
I would encourage you to hear from the superintendent and his staff about what that impact, what impact that would have and what their recommendation would be for that motion.
Can we answer it now?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I think, you know, so this is the committee's recommendation. I think the biggest thing is, is that I, I don't think it's a, um, a super, uh, strong way to signal that, you know, if a kid makes a bad decision during the school day that we should penalize them on something they truly love and enjoy because that may be the one thing that they, uh, you know, are drawn to be accurately engaged in school. However, I think from the committee's perspective, they're just trying to find proactive ways and solutions to keep the learner in the school. And however, this could create some type of, uh, separation as well, not being able to participate in, in an event or a performance or a game. And, um, you know, I think that I'm okay with it if the board wants to strike this. I have no problems whatsoever. Uh, but there, I think the committee was just trying to find proactive solutions to keep learners in schools and to put it in front. And I think by the launch detention and the change of clothes can, can help with that process.
At some point, you should have further discussion about the amendment.
Yes, we will have further discussion. We have a second to discuss if we would move to.
Please clear the board because this is a discussion about the amendment, which is to strike the language of Ms. Vaughn read. So please clear the board. And then if, if board members want to speak about the amendment only, then now's the time.
Okay. I, I, I pressed, um, my button first. Um, I guess one of the things would be, the committee has really been involved with this and looking at this. I know from having a high school student that I think it, when we're talking about this, it's very severe inappropriate clothing that sometimes occurs. I, I don't feel like a school or principal is going to put somebody in in-school suspension because of that. And I think it's, I, I think it's hard for me to come in and try to make a change with the committee who's engaged and worked on this and come in and just start striking things. So for me personally, I'm, I'm not going to do that because I know from having a high school student and I've, I've sometimes said, oh, my gosh, you know, I'm the chair of the school board, you can't wear that, you know? So I know that it does happen and I, I haven't received phone calls. So I see kids in different schools, what they're wearing. And I've never, I don't think you're going to find a student who's been placed in in-school suspension unless sometimes I have seen clothes that are very severe, that are very distracting, that are very inappropriate. So I think for me, I, I am going to stick with what you've recommended as a committee and not come in and start making changes arbitrarily. And that's just my opinion. So that's all I have to say about that. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I do agree, um, a little bit with what, what you said because I know that they spent a lot of time thinking about this and considering all the different consequences. I guess my question would be on the dress code, um, looking at page 32, the, uh, why is it not congruent with the one to three days of ISS? Why is it one to three days of ISS but one to five days that they're ineligible to participate in any extracurricular activities? To me, it should be congruent, but that's just my, you know, observation.
Through the chair, I can address that. So when the committee wanted to take a look at this, they really, as the superintendent said earlier, they were trying to look at solutions and consequences that would keep students in class and keep students from learning. This suggestion, this recommendation came primarily from our committee members who were secondary level, our middle school parents, teachers, principals, and our high school ones, who said, if we have students who really are blatantly being disrespectful and wearing clothing that they intend to cause a disruption or that they intend to be disrespectful to someone, then we need to find something that we can take away from them that means something to them. Take away one day of, of practice, take away one day, one or two days of something that doesn't pull them out of the classroom. As the superintendent said earlier, our principals and our teachers know our students. They know when someone makes a mistake, puts on a dirty shirt by mistake and wears it to school. That's not what they're going, that's not an incident where they're going to punish a student by taking them out of their extracurricular activities. It's when they know that a student is just trying to push the buttons and push the system and really go above and beyond to be disrespectful, that's when they wanted to have a consequence like this in place for them. So that was the intent.
Okay, so intentional malfeasance, basically, and being, at least having the option of saying up to five days of, you know, being ineligible to participate in case they needed that, um, to have that. Okay. Well, I'd be, I'd be inclined to agree with the experts that if that's what they recommend, one to five days, then, then I am agreeable to that, uh, along with Chair Combs. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Snively. Member Perez?
So you have the, so it's a choice of all these, not everything in there. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. That's one of the major additions that we did was to offer more options for consequences so that they could really tailor it to the student and knowing the students as they do.
Who would, who would select from these, from these choices? Would it be, um, they would put the, the students to select their own punishment or the teacher would select? Or what would happen?
No, this would be the administrative team. I'm sure they would take input from the teacher to see whether this is repeat behavior or whether this is a unique situation, but it would be the administrative team at the schools.
Okay. And like I mentioned, you know, my concern is that the, already the suspension seems really high with targeted groups. And that's just my concern. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna verbalize that again. It just seems like, um, and this is ongoing. It hasn't just been this year. It's been already several years going, going forward. And I can see that, you know, you, you're giving choices, but it seems to me that certain groups are, their choices, you can have 50 choices to select from, but certain groups are given only specific choices. And those, those choices have become harmful to them.
Through the chair, if I may respond. Um, just one point about the data, as we shared that with you earlier today, what we are providing for the superintendent this week is the data that you have in front of you and which he's going to share with the rest of you are the cumulative incidents that have happened. But let me give you an example. We might have one group that has had 6,000 suspensions, but of that, those suspensions, 3,000 of them have been committed by maybe 50 students. So what Josh Crystal's team has done is they have gone through and they have targeted all of the students who have had 10 or more suspensions and have realized that those are our students that we really need to focus on. We need to help tell our teachers, you've got a rising student here who last year had a proclivity to have infractions. So what we're going, going to do is provide those teachers and the administrators with saying, these are our students who are most in danger right now, and these are the ones that we really have to provide the supports for. So when we get that data to you, you'll see the difference in the numbers for the number of unique students rather than the total number of incidents.
Thank you. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I look at this list, the ISS and ineligible, and I found out over the years, most students who are involved in athletics, they won't get in this category. Most of them won't because the coaches are also out there taking care of them. So if they continue to misbehave, and if they continue to misbehave, then they don't want, they, 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 the coaches would take over and do the rest of what they need to do. I found that to be very helpful to have a coach say, look, you got this football player now, this guy disrupting the school, we need to do something. And he takes care of that personally. But if, if a student continue, continue to do it, then you got to take something away from that he or she loves. And this is a way of doing it because most athletes now, they don't want to miss a game or they don't want to miss practice. So when you take that away from them guys or them young ladies, they fall back in line most of the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. Um, you know, just to follow up with some points. One, I'm not arbitrarily crossing anything out due to a committee report. Um, I appreciate committees giving us, doing the hard work and bringing their, bringing forth their recommendations, but as school board members, it's our job to look at this and also question it and bring forth recommendations. I'm not going to blindly sign off on any committee idea without asking questions or giving my suggestions. That's what I was elected to do. Um, but I did want to make the point that while it doesn't seem my fellow board members agree with me, um, for dress code violation, I think to take away something that might be the only crux of what's keeping a student in school is against the very nature of restorative practices. And it's equivalent to taking away PE time or recess in elementary school when a student misbehaves. Um, you know, I'm hoping that this is going to be a subjective case-by-case basis, and this isn't going to be used, you know, very often. But as Member Perez has brought up, there might be a student who is in poverty, who doesn't have a lot of options, who violates the dress code repeatedly. And again, to take away something that might be the only thing keeping them in school over a dress code violation to me seems against the nature of restorative practices. So whether it passes or not, I stand behind my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray.
Not beating a dead horse here, but let me just share that, um, this committee is made up also of students and also I meet with students every, let's see, I think, well, once a month at least about the dress code. And, um, what I've learned too is that the dress code in the committee is bound, and, and Ms. Baze, you can correct me, by a national, um, committee that oversees what is the, let's just say, the acceptable, the, the parameters of dress code. So this wasn't an abracadabra moment from a, a separate committee. This was a huge cohesive collaborative effort from a national, uh, perspective as well. Um, and I think in that, in that latitude, in that large scope of thinking, I think board members also, when we look at this code of conduct, and I'll agree with Member Snively, you're really looking at a living document. So I would say, and, and this is in really respect to, uh, Member Vaughn, um, that when we look at this again, which we shall, that there's, at least what I used to do is just continually make little edits. So when we do have a workshop again, we can renew and regroup and, if we have to, uh, make different edits. But, uh, the, the committee is not an isolated one. It's, it's, it's a huge operation and a lot of folks, experts have already weighed in. Um, but, okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to be voting for what's on the floor now, which is Member Vaughn to make a strike to say if you want to change the code of conduct and strike that, you will vote yes. And if you don't want to, you will vote no. So that's what's on the floor right now. So please vote when your lights appear. Okay. And it does not pass. Uh, Member Vaughn and Member Perez voted yes, and the remaining four voted no. So now we are back to the initial, which is 1001. Is there further discussion regarding the, the code of conduct? And Member Vaughn? No?
Please clear the board.
Yes, let's go ahead and clear the vote, board. Is there any discussion remaining for the code of conduct? If not, please vote when your lights appear.
Yeah. Oh, I should have put back in.
Member Snively, you wanted to, to make one more comment? Member Snively?
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. The only comment I, I wanted to make was, um, actually, Member Gray took the words out of my mouth when she mentioned that this is kind of a living and breathing document. And the last time we actually worked shop this was almost, it was actually about a year ago. I think it was June of 2021. And so what I would recommend, uh, for future, because we've had quite a discussion on this. It's obviously a very important document and there's lots to be, um, considered when voting on something like this. And so I think the recommendation that I would make to, uh, the superintendent and his staff might be to have a workshop that might be a little bit closer to the vote. And so we, this would have been a great workshop to have, um, to consider the changes prior to bringing them to the board for a vote tonight. And so really, that's, that's the only thing I wanted to just make that suggestion, just because we have, you know, spent quite a bit of time on this and, which is good. It just could be potentially in a workshop setting, um, before it comes to the board for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Snively. And, um, Superintendent Davis, I know you have that recommendation and we can work together and create a schedule for that to make sure that we put that in, on the schedule for workshop. Uh, please vote when your lights appear. And it passes with five votes and one no, and that's Jessica Vaughn. Abstention. Okay. Next is 1201, which is the information regarding the proposed future attendance boundary changes per school board procedures. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am. Just for informational purposes, we know that we have, uh, engaged with the company X Y, X, WXY Architects and Urban Design to be able to look at all of our boundaries within our school district. Um, in this process, they provided a timeline. I know that Mr. Farker's team has met with each of, and every one of you to discuss the timeline and noting that while they're starting this process now and it will go to the, it will go, beginning of the year, it will go to December, is that we will, they will make recommendations that we can potentially implement for August of 2023, meaning that we will not follow school district policy as policy requires us to put any boundary changes in advance one year. But we're just trying to maximize all of our, um, all of our facilities and make certain that we are leveraging every student station that we can. So along the way that the board will be apprised of where we are because we're going to have active engagement with the community and that the board will be, we will workshop this once it is completed so the board can make informed decisions. And it'd be a board decision whether or not they implement the recommendations that I bring forth, uh, at the end of next year, at the end of December of 2022, and for us to be able to start this in the fall of 2023.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. This is an informational item, so we'll move on to the next item, which is superintendent comments. Superintendent Davis?
Yes, ma'am. Through the chair. Tonight, just have a, a couple of updates. Through the chair, tonight, just have a couple of updates that I want to provide the board. The first, we'll start out with, we'll start to talk about district highlights, looking at consent agenda review items, update on sales tax, and then also review our suspended agenda. The first one is continue to make certain that there's a number of initiatives that bundled every one of our core goals within our school district and our strategic plan through academic excellence, making certain we focus on our supportive culture, making certain that we're fiscal responsible. In this, I want to bring the third grade FSA reading score results. While we see that in 2021 that we did have a decline from 2021 to 2022, we see that if you look at a span of between 2018 and 2019 to 2022 where we are currently, look at surrounding counties, we have had a greater loss than all the surrounding counties. This is because of the hard work and dedication. We did not, sorry, we did not have the greatest loss, sorry, we did not have the greatest loss of surrounding counties. This has just contributed to our hard work of our staff, our teachers are working hard, and this just shows you overall the impact that a pandemic has had on us academically. And the state of Florida has lost 5%. Hillsborough County, we, over these, the rate of change over these number of years, last four years, has been 3%. And we look at surrounding counties, it ranged from 4% to 7%. This is just to get everyone up to date on what we're seeing related to our pandemic implementation, that achievement gap continues to have to be addressed, but we stand ready. But also, we have a number of our schools that are our top 10 performers. We see, and this is the top 10 performers are related to the number of students that are proficient. Congratulations to these schools with McHittick being the leader and Bryant Elementary, Mitchell Beavis, Roland Park. And then you see other schools in that top 10. Then also, we have those who've made the greatest improvements, with West Tampa Elementary School increased in 25 percentage points, Citrus Park, Seminole, West Shore. And you see another five there that looks has made double-digit gains. Congratulations to their staff for working hard, and we know that this is a very important assessment within our schools. So what do we see that's upcoming? We know that this is going to give us a better picture of what we can forecast, the impact and all the disruption it has had from COVID. I would say that this is, when we see a downward spiral of the last two years or the last couple of years, that that's going to be echoed throughout this entire state. And this state will have the most underperforming schools that they, you know, DNF schools that we've ever had related to the impacts of the pandemic. And so FSA and EOC assessment data should be coming out soon. But this is not to say that it's a reflection of our teachers or our district leaders and school-based leaders. They have worked miracles to make certain that we address the overarching needs of our students and the challenges they face. And our work's not done. The pandemic is going to have multi-year impact on our students academically. We just ask our community, ask the board, ask our, you know, the state to be patient with this process because we're all working collectively to address this. Our literacy team, our academic services team is solid, and they're working every single day to make this reality. And next year, we have a new baseline because we'll have a new progress monitoring assessment after this year's data comes out. And that will be a baseline for many years to come to where we go and what we have to do to be able to implement. We just talked about the code of student conduct, but making certain that we offer restorative practice centers within our school district, also making certain that we see more opportunity for social circles and restorative practices, making certain that ISS is more of an inclusive approach for students to reflect on their behaviors and making better decisions, you know, within their school every single day. And then also making certain that we are defining what physical attacks are and inclusive of students who are joining into these physical attacks, where they're part of the now the code of conduct, and that we're holding them accountable for any undesired decisions that they may be making, and then really giving explicit examples of disobedience so they're not subjective in that process. And then also tonight, you know, being able to implement the mental health plan for approval. We're looking at how we continue to connect services, how do we continue to have ongoing professional development for our staff so they are armed to be able to help children, and then looking at all of our contracted services with Central Florida Behavior, Envo Grace Point, with our mobile response team. These are all contractual innovative solutions to help our students with eliminating Baker Act and making certain that we have de-escalation opportunities and clinical, you know, individuals that are there to be able to help from a therapeutic mindset. Our students make informed decisions and be successful along the way. And then finally, making certain that we are adding additional support services with continuing to have 28 mental health counselors at our schools using mental health, using Estor dollars, and also having contracted services with additional counselors, putting two counselors in every, you know, every region. And those individuals having that triage to be able to have further support of a school that may be in need. And then also bring in Hazel, which is our telehealth, not only from addressing it from a mental health support perspective, but transitioning to be able to have it from a physical health perspective. If a student isn't feeling well, being able to help them connect services and so they don't have to leave the home to be able to make certain they stay healthy. And then also the consent agenda tonight, you know, we see there's an expansion of dual enrollment. This is being able to make certain that we are properly aligning services with Hillsborough Community College, with University of Florida, South Florida, and bringing more innovative classrooms for dual enrollment, for accelerated opportunities to our, to our students. This is saving our families so much money of college courses and then preparing them for post-secondary opportunities if they elect to be able to make that transition. And then also using, we see that we're using safety, security, and millage money to address the growing needs of making certain we have access controls in our schools so that everyone just doesn't have access to come in our schools and their safety protocols, and at the same token, being able to expand camera installations, which is so important. And then as always, you know, many thanks to our community to address our billion dollars of deferred maintenance. We've continued to leverage this funding in a proactive solution, proactive manner. Tonight, new facility for Manhattan K8 comes on board, that's $63 million build. You see that it's been significant increase from what we were able to build Dorothy York. This is about a $12 million increase because of supplies and the rate of pay on our sites. And then also Witter being able to finalize their HVAC and also being able to recognize 22 major projects for the summer. And thanks to operations team and our oversight committee for making this a priority, you know, every, every month and every, and every day that we can. And the suspended agenda, you know, this is about making certain growth management is continues to be in the front as WXY Architect and Design will complete their first phase of district-wide attendance boundaries, being able to look at capacity issues, socioeconomic diverse school-based populations, identified underutilized schools. You'll see large group engagement, virtual town hall, community feedbacks, board engagement, cabinet engagement, area superintendents, which we just did last, yesterday, and then looking at 15 micro engagement workshops so that we have one county virtual informational session as well, and then being able to provide ongoing updates to the board along with our staff and continue to have one-on-ones prior to completion about where we are and getting feedback from the board about what the realities are, where we are faced, and what we can do and have a completion date of eight months so we can implement this in an efficient manner and do it in a way that's over-communicating and engaging our community so they feel consistently informed about what's going on related to the attendance boundary and what potential changes will be in the forefront. So that is everything that I have tonight. And once again, I thank this board for their ongoing support of me and this team, and will continue to stay committed and working hard and diligently and tirelessly every single day on behalf of our children and also our employees. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see everybody smiling now because they're getting down to the end out there. So, but anyway, I had something to say on Toba, but Member Gray is going to talk about the Toba Leadership Institute as she and I attended. Also, I want to thank Commissioner Gwen Myers on having the raised the flag for Juneteenth at the county center. We had quite, we had a lot of people participate in that. And again, thank you, Commissioner Gwen Myers, for having that event. Yesterday, I had a great opportunity. I had a chance to go to the Avid Institute. Tampa is currently taking place at the Tampa Convention Center and surrounding hotels. The professional learning experience brings educators from surrounding districts and even across the country to learn, engage, and collaborate to develop Avid school-wide systems. Yesterday, Hillsborough County Avid site, team of over 250 participants worked together to each develop goals for how they will use Avid to help their students succeed. Teachers, counselors, administrators from our Avid schools are taking the time out of the summer to learn and grow using Avid. A shout out to Riverview High School 2022 valedictorian, DeAndre Dultry, who was selected as one of the keynote student speakers for today's juror session. And that was a great job that they did, and I enjoyed. And in fact, I gave, I gave away $150 to the person that could tell me who was the founder of, who was the founder of Avid. And a young lady won it, and she was very happy. And so, you know, it was something to get her motivated. Believe me, they were fired up for the $150. So anyway, that's all I have for tonight, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Perez?
I'm going to be short, just like, just like Washington, but, yeah, where'd the soup go? You know where he ran off to? So I would like to see our numbers with OSS drop. I'm just really, really concerned about this, especially with our Black and Latino community. The fact that there is a concern with these communities having the highest dropout rate, the lowest reading and comprehension scores, doesn't help support these students when they're suspended and not receiving the learning that they need and require to stay up with their fellow counterparts. I'm, you know, concerned, as is these communities that surround these students, especially when these students make up the majority of the suspensions and they make their decision to drop out of school. You know, we need board members to do better when it comes to helping these students and to support their success. It's very alarming to see that these, that these populations continue to be suspended at a high rate. And for me, it's concerning as a board member.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Gray?
Yes, Member Washington and I were, we had the pleasure to attend the Toba Tampa Organization of Black Affairs Educational Leadership. And in that experience, both Member Washington and I got to hear the Black youths commit a great workforce initiative. In fact, Mayor Jane Castor is going to help them, City of Tampa, the Toba, this particular academy, workforce academy, become very successful. And we decided that we would align them with our Hillsborough County Public School District, and not seeing Superintendent Davis here, but we are meeting with those Toba representatives to see if we can help them expand their avenues of gaining, let's just say, opportunities for the Black male and female to join the workforce in our district. So that was, it was very, very positive, very impressive. Also, we're going to go ahead and say congratulations to Melissa Magado for now taking the lead. She'll be our staff lead with our Hispanic Forum. And she's not here tonight, but I hope she knows that we're bragging on her. She has a lot to offer and a lot of opportunities. And now, we do have, da-da-da-da, Dr. Weeks, do we have my video for the migrant family?
Okay, we do. Oh, yes. Hi, my name is Barbara Howard, and I volunteer with the migrant education program of Hillsborough County Schools. I was first linked to the migrant education program through a friend who worked with Inez Colon at Pine Crest Elementary. Through our conversations, I found that there was a lot of need in the migrant community and decided to start helping. My first experience was just finding a table with four chairs for a family in need, and that has blossomed into an entire Facebook group and page, and high schoolers and middle schoolers and families volunteering and communities donating items to go to families in need. I feel like I'm Santa providing Christmas every time I drive up to a family who needs something that I'm bringing. So hearing what they need and being able to ask my community to provide those things makes me feel good. It connects people in ways that we haven't done. I did go through a personal time of five years of dealing with depression and anxiety when I first arrived to the area in 2016. Through a lot of medical intervention, I have finally found a balance that works for me. And when I started feeling better and started taking on little bits of responsibility, I found that working with the migrant education program was just very energizing for me. It met a lot of my personal values and desires of what I wanted to do with my time. Do you have any donations that you would find helpful to a migrant family? They need the basics, housewares, kitchenwares, any furniture that is more vertical than wide, stacking furniture, anything that you can use in a small space. I always say, think about dorm furniture, anything that's space-saving, we can always use that.
Barbara is an amazing volunteer, and in 30 years in this district, I have never met anybody with such passion and compassion for people that truly are in need. So thank you, Barbara, for being a part of our program.
And obviously, we want to thank Carol Mayo, who is our Director of the Migrant, which we have more than 2,000 migrants, students in our school system. I want to thank also Pastor Carlos, who helps with a lot of the food and the clothing needs along with enterprising Latinos, Leanna Centro and Liz Gutierrez, all of which make this Wyamama community so strong and rich. Last, real quick, we do have a town hall coming at June 30th, Thursday, at Newsome High School from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and Chief Newman will be the one presiding. And Member Snively also will be there. I don't know, hopefully with her one foot, she'll hopefully have her, both her feet healthy. So we'll hope to see both her, her there that night. I better stop. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I simply wanted to say thank you for making accommodations for me today, being virtual. You know, I'm an in-person type of lady when I can be there, and I did break my right foot, my driving foot, so it's been a little bit of an inconvenience. But you know what? I appreciate technology and the fact that I can still be virtual and participate that way. And I just want to thank all the folks in the background who helped to make that happen because they're very, very helpful in accommodating with regard to that. And then I look forward to, as Ms. Gray mentioned, the security town hall at Newsome High School in Lithia. That's going to be on the 30th, as she mentioned, and I will be there with both of my feet, Ms. Gray. And hopefully to address any concerns that parents might have about what we're doing to make sure that when they drop their children off or when they walk their, see their children walk out the door to go to school every morning, that they feel that their children are in the safest place that they can be. And rest assured that we're doing everything that we can do in our power as a school board, as a school district, to make sure that we're taking care of the most precious people in the world and who are our future. So, so thank you for suggesting that, Ms. Gray. I look forward to hopefully seeing a good, good crowd of community on the 30th of June. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Snively. Member Vaughn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I just wanted to kind of take a moment to thank my fellow board members, the superintendent and all of the staff. We've faced incredible challenges over the last couple of years. As anyone has said, this has been one of the hardest couple of years of education in general, and we've been faced with so many different crises. And even though we're all different and we may not always agree, as we can see through a very long, robust meeting with lots of conversation, you know, I really believe that everyone here is, you know, putting the work in because they really care about our district and about our staff and about our students, most importantly. And I just, I really appreciate my coworkers. You know, I see other boards, I see other municipality, I've seen other iterations of this board. And I think that, you know, we're all really putting forward, you know, our best selves to try to work together collaboratively. And we take a lot of hit on social media and in general within the public for things. And it's really easy to villainize and and in general, within the public for things, and it's really easy to villainize and demonize, you know, things that are out of our control. And I'm not saying, you know, we don't all have work to do, or we can't all do better, or we're perfect by any means. We can all be better version of ourselves. But, you know, I just really appreciate, you know, everyone here and what you contribute. And I really, I feel positive going into this next year. I know we're all focused, and we had a lot of conversation about stability and making sure that we're doing everything going into this next year to turn morale around. As you've mentioned, Member Perez, I appreciate that, so that our, the people in our schools on the front line, you know, see and understand that, you know, it's our priority to support them, because we know and understand that their success directly relates to student success. So, you know, it's been a ruffle, a rough couple of years, but I just wanted to take this time to really express my appreciation to everybody. And that's, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Member Vaughn. I really should close with that, but I'm just going to make a couple of short comments, because that was so, that was so heartfelt and just so, so well-stated. Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank Anne Marie Courtney, who oversees community outreach. She helped us find a keynote speaker for the Children's Cancer Center. I've been involved with them for about nine years, and she came to the dinner with me. And Panera Need for Knowledge, they've given out over $500,000 in the last nine years for kids who are either in remission or have had cancer to go to college. So I think that's just, this, two weeks ago, or a week ago, we went, and 21 recipients applied, and every one of them received a scholarship, and it was over $65,000 were given. So I want to make sure that we get that information out there, so that way we have more and more students who apply, because we had a sibling scholarship, and not one sibling applied. So we want to make sure we get that information out there. And a couple of things, you know, my son finished a technical vocational class here at Hillsborough County Public Schools. He started that, and I was really proud, because when he started looking at HCC, I said, hey, we have the programs here. So, and I will say, you know, all of us have different children, and I think my son has reminded me the importance of mentors, because when I see him struggling, he has a family who's really supportive, who has to wake him up maybe three or four times. A lot of children don't have that. And having, you know, two totally different children reminds me of the importance of bringing those mentors in and making sure, you know, we had so many alumni here today, let's make sure those people in the community go back and, and help our students, because it's so important that we're all in together. And with that, I kind of want to leave you a story. You know, when I saw this with the top 10 improvement, and I saw West Tampa Elementary at plus 25, I wasn't surprised. Right before school ended, I was out west Tampa with Mr. Castner, and we were walking around, and there was a young boy there who came up and said, Mr. Castner, when are you going to give me some more chocolate? And he said, I'll give it to you later. And as we walked, I said, why did he ask you for chocolate? Now, without even telling me, you know, you would think he said, well, about a year ago, that young boy was attacked by a pit bull. And he was attacked, and he was scarred on the face and the shoulder. And he said, I found a plastic surgeon in the Tampa Bay community to operate on him completely free, because he comes with a single mom. Those are the kinds of stories and the kinds of administrators that we have and teachers who do so much each and every day. And, you know, he wasn't even going to tell me the story. It was just a coincidence, and that's why it's no surprise of all the increases and all the hard work that we do each and every day. And it really is, for the principals, the leadership, the cabinet, and superintendent, I'm, I'm so glad that we had, you had an unanimous vote, because you have worked so hard, you and your cabinet, and we really thank each and every one of you, and I hope you have a nice evening. This meeting is adjourned.
Only schools in Hillsborough County that you will find this, this type of partnership. And when you talk about high school students and eighth graders coming together, they get to PT together, they get to have fun together, they get to go on trips together.
I'm doing RDC because I wanted to get the credits. It gives you liberal arts and hope for two years, and additionally, it gives you community service hours, so I can build up for like bright futures and get a scholarship.
My brother was in it, and it really inspired me to want to join, and also, it's a good opportunity to meet new people.
They are getting to know some of the students that are here in high school. They are interacting with them on a daily basis, so you can see how the eighth graders...